Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting, Thursday, March 27th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Orbach.
Here.
Vice Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here. Would everybody please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Additions or deletions to the agenda?
Staff has no changes this evening.
Mayor, could I request a brief one-minute pause to make sure our sound is transmitting?
Absolutely.
Thank you. We should be good to go.
Thank you. That brings us to item three, presentations. Today, we have a presentation from our lovely friends of the Santa Cruz County Parks on Treasure Cove Playground Fundraising Campaign. Welcome.
Good evening. Okay, wonderful. Good evening, and I just want to say thank you for having us. My name is Mariah Roberts, Executive Director of County Park Friends. And really, before I do anything, I want to thank each of you for your support. To our community. Thank you. So we're here to share this story of Treasure Cove at Jade Street Park, a universally designed playground. This is a story about the power of designing places where everyone belongs. First, honor you, the city of Capitola. Your vision and your commitment to this project got us here. And your invitation to us, the county, launched the campaign. County Park Friends launched a fundraising campaign in August of 2023. And our goal was to raise the private pension of the needed funds over and over. People thought this was inspired by these lucky women already moved by you, the city of Capitola. And they were so happy. Tonight, we're here to celebrate those people and those obligations who stepped up and donated to make the city an inclusive community. Excellent. Take a look. So. So, across our community, the success of this campaign demonstrates the passion and support for the project that serves generations of families to come. I'm proud to hear that we will be providing a grant to the city of Capitola for more than $965,000. With that, we'll stay on this slide, and I'm going to turn it over to an incredibly keen volunteer on this campaign, the one in the room.
Well, thank you very much. And I just wanted to say, we raised funds in different ways. Individuals made gifts, large and small. And you can see from the screen here, there were many of them. There were fundraising events. There were foundation grants. Our largest aggregate gift actually came from members of the Capitola Aptos Rotary Club, who raised close to $300,000. And that included two significant gifts made by two members on behalf of and honor of their spouses. Other large gifts included a one-to-one matching challenge gift of $250,000 from the Monterey Peninsula Foundation and a $200,000 matching gift from an anonymous local donor. So there were more than 1,500 individual donors and so many events. Next slide, please. So, events included exercise classes at Jade Street Park by Goat Santa Cruz, sold-out fundraiser by Britannia Arms, who's attended by many of you, a raffle with the Santa Cruz Warriors, a dinner by Capitola Aptos Rotary Club, the beach boardwalks chili cook-off, the Surf City Colonis crab feed, and of course, the Santa Cruz Sunrise Rotary's annual bike ride. So nearly 100 people gave less than $1,000, and the smallest gift was $10. So we had all different types of donors at all different levels. And all were excited by matching your city's commitment to this playground. The fundraising team included Heidi Kellison, Jerry Jensen, Lvette Locas Brooks, Tricia Wolfshier, Mariah Roberts, me, Lisa Harvey Duran, and Brenda Gutierrez. And now, first, I'd like to introduce Brenda Gutierrez of County Park Friends, who also serves as the County Commissioner on Disabilities. And if I can ask for the next slide, please.
Hello. Growing up as a disabled child, I often struggled with feeling so lonely, nervous, and being left out due to that lack of accessibility and inclusive accessible spaces. As a young person, I was given the chance to play, explore, and belong. Yet, for so long, classrooms were not designed with all the communities in mind. That's inclusive playgrounds like Treasure Cove are very vital to ensure that disabled kids have that equal opportunity to engage, connect, and thrive. Our goal has always been to create these spaces where future generations get welcome from the very start. And I'm incredibly proud to see that our community is making those changes and of inclusivity each day. As I'm here to welcome my first nephew into the world, I'm very happy that he imagined wanting to play side by side with him at Treasure Cove, something that should be possible for every family. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, everyone who's here tonight with the Treasure Cove. Go to the next slide, please. Really, we just want to extend our deep gratitude to everyone involved. When we work together, we can do great things. When we design public spaces for everyone, everyone else. I think I can speak for everyone when I say we are excited to celebrate groundbreaking with you later this year and get everyone to look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item four, additional materials.
Staff distributed additional materials for items 3A, 8B, and 8C relating to tonight's agenda packet. All items are available for public review, both in-person, in the back of the room, online, and were provided to the council before tonight's meeting.
Thank you. It brings us to number five, oral communications by members of the public. You have up to three minutes to speak on items on consent or that are not on the general government. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Clark, and councilmembers. Heidi Kellison, I served on the Committee for Treasure Cove, as was previously mentioned. I wanted to let you know how important it was to be able to speak to the city's commitment in that, both as a committee member and as a donor. And also, one of the things I do in my life is I'm a child, a longtime child advocate, most recently serving 10 years for the First Five California Network. And what we're seeing is the transition of service delivery, where it used to be more institutionalized, but we're seeing from family, friend, and neighbor networks. And so, things like parks aren't just places to play, they're actually where people go to get services and engage prevention. When we invest in childhood, that is the best use of our tax dollar because we reduce the incidence of more challenging circumstances later in life. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
So, my name is Rich Hamlin. I'm a member of the Capitola Aptos Rotary Club, and I'm one of the individuals who made a significant contribution to this project in the memory of my wife, who passed away last year. She had a disabled son and was fond of seeing kids like him have places to play and participate where they were welcome. And so, in her memory, I hope that this project gets completed in a timely fashion, and I'm here to encourage you to do what you can to move things along.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Nelson Crandall. I'm here in my capacity as the current president of the Capitola Aptos Rotary Club. I can't tell you how proud our club has been at the success of the fundraising effort for this project. We know that its success depended not so much, I mean, not so much on the efforts of our club members, but rather the appeal of the project to the people that are in the area. People instantly understand how important a project like this is for building community. And I just want to thank the city of Capitola for giving us the opportunity to participate in the project. And again, we're looking forward to seeing it successful completion.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Doug Dever, also with the Capitola Aptos Rotary. Joe, good to see you again. Alexander, Alexander, I worked for him, so he made me everything I am today. We've talked about disabled access and, you know, how great that is for, you know, parks and parks and the playgrounds that we're doing in the area. But I also want to say that playgrounds also make a big difference for people that aren't handicapped. And if you don't believe me, go to Leo's Haven, which is extremely well-used by kids today. And, you know, having kids off their phones and socializing is such a big deal. And it's something even the schools are a little lacking right now. So having playgrounds for kids is absolutely a great idea. You may not know, but the Capitola Aptos Rotary not only has supported this park, but we've also supported Willowbrook with the large donations, obviously Leo's Haven, and also Hidden Beach Park. So this is kind of one of many of the parks that we've helped support in the area. And the other thing I just want to make you aware of is that over, you know, 60% of the money that was donated to this project came from outside, from people, donors outside the city of Capitola, shows the commitment of the community. Because at the time that we were doing the fundraising for this project, you also had two other major projects going on. You had your Wharf project going on and your library project going on. So this just goes to show you how the community can come together to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Hello, Mayor Clark and city councilmembers. My name is Tina Andrea, and I'm a former business owner in Capitola. I am proud, I am a proud donor to Treasure Cove Universally Accessible Playground. And I'm also grateful to your council and to the city staff for your commitment and work on the project, which will ensure that no child is left on the sidelines of play. Your commitment to Treasure Cove means that our community enhances all children, regardless of their abilities. I look forward to the groundbreaking this summer for this beautifully inclusive playground. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Goran Klopic. I'm a former security guard for our Capitola city here, Capitola Village. I want to commemorate something here. We lost somebody, a great man, a while ago. His name was Damon Gottsfeeler. I played pickleball with Damon Gottsfeeler and did not realize back then who he was. But then I saw his wife cry at an event. And it stung me a little bit in my heart, you know? Because I had an army background, I was in the army overseas. I just want to remind that he was a great man. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Welcome.
Dear councilmembers, my name is Sharad Link, and I'm a member, or I live at the Cabrillo Mobile Home Estate. I'm the president there. We just got notice that our rent is going to be raised from $642 to the outrageous amount of $2,200. I'm living off Social Security, I have medical bills, I have Parkinson's, and there's a chance I just have to walk away from my house. I cannot afford $2,200 on a Social Security. And I'm not the only one, you know? There's a lot of people, families, they all want to be on the street. Because what happened with the rent ordinance, what we put in? Why are they, what is it, Viera Enterprises allowed to raise rent so much? You know, I don't see the future very, very bright with this rent so extremely high. Do we have to take our house out? What happened with the affordable housing? You know, it's a big concern, and I just want you to be aware of this. And I hope the Affordable, you know, what is the rent control ordinance will still be in effect and will help us, because it did help us last time. And everybody was living happy in the park till we got this pack of so many papers, you know? And they're fighting us now. And we have no idea what's going to happen. It could be all on the street. And the house won't be anything good, because the higher the rent, the lower you can ask for your house. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Eric Cootney. I'm here to talk about the Stockton Avenue Bridge, the building report. I was.
We will be dealing with that later on in our general business. So if you want to have a comment then?
Um, can I at least have my two minutes about what I'm.
You can have it. There will be time for the public to speak on.
What time will that be?
It'll be later on in the meeting.
Okay.
It'll be item B, 8B.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, so I'm here to say that the BIA and the city are working together to put an event on the Wharf. We are very excited to have outstanding in the field come in May 28th. The BIA will be doing a raffle, so please participate for the raffle so you can get your tickets. But this event is a big coup, and we're all very excited. So I just wanted everybody to know that we're all working together to try to make an event happen.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Justin Maffia, I have been a member of the community for about a dozen of the last 20 years in Capitola. I came up tonight because I'm very concerned about Councilmember Orbach's comments at the March 13th meeting, where she outright stated that she represents the people that voted for her. Well, it's not intended to be a jab, as she called it. I do have concerns that she arrives with scripted responses and does not demonstrate any evidence of listening to the public as we come up here and share our opinion on what's going on in our city. It raises serious questions as to if the people of Capitola are being heard. We absolutely want our council members to come prepared. That's not what I'm saying. Thoughtful leadership requires preparation, but it also requires listening. While councilmembers may not be able to engage us, the public during public comment, you do have the ability to show that you've listened to us during your discussions on topics that are happening. When responses are pre-written and read, it erodes public trust. It weakens credibility. City council members are elected to serve our entire community, not just their supporters. Effective leadership means engaging all constituents, actively listening, and demonstrating a willingness to engage the public. That is the definition of inclusive leadership. Leadership should unite us, not dismiss us. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. When I first saw the Moss Landing fire on January 16th, I was driving home from Capitola Park Avenue, and I looked across the bay, and I saw this fire. And this, this says, "Never again stop the three lithium-ion battery storage facilities proposed for Santa Cruz County. The proposed locations are behind Dominican Hospital, next to Aptos High School, near Orymille, 90 Minto Road, Watsonville. Thousands of people in Santa Cruz and Monterey Counties are ill from the toxic air released during the world's largest lithium-ion battery fire on January 16th at the Moss Landing Battery Storage Site. If you have burning eyes, metallic taste, sore throat, burning tongue, cough, nausea, rash, difficulty breathing, headaches, exhaustion, and more, you may be, may have been poisoned by the fire. Contact the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors and tell them to ban lithium-ion battery storage facilities in our communities. Phone number 454-2200. Visit our Facebook site at CampaignToStopLithiumBatteryFacilities in Santa Cruz County." Now, I've known for, after a great deal of reading, the dangers of electricity. There's a book called The Invisible Rainbow: History of Electricity and Life that shows with each time there's electrical pollution, you have illnesses. I'm also finding out, I just got this a few days, emerging hazards of battery energy storage system fires. There has been a dramatic, and this is from the University of Austin, Texas, it tells the grant number, et cetera, to investigate these fires. There have been a dramatic increase in the use of battery energy storage systems in the United States. These systems are used in residential, commercial, and utility-scale applications. Most of these symptoms consist of lithium-ion battery cells. A single battery cell can store, tells how much energy. Unfortunately, these lithium cells can experience thermal runaway, which causes them to release very hot, flammable, toxic gases. In large storage systems, failures of one lithium cell can cascade to include hundreds of individual cells.
Thank you for your comment. We've exceeded the three minutes.
I'll leave you with copies of this, and the firemen can't extinguish them. We need all of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can leave this with you to put up at your offices. Everyone should jump into this. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Dave Fox. I lived up on McCormick for a number of years. I'm wondering, I just have an open question. Has the Public Works notified the people up on Grand Avenue that they have to move their property lines back to the property line and give the city back our space for our iconic walkway? I'm just looking for an answer.
Well, thank you for your question.
Has the Public Works said they would do that?
Thank you for the question. Welcome.
Welcome. Hello, Kevin McGuire here. I had a statement about the March 13th meeting with Melinda and voted in on her platform and here to represent the people that voted for her and not the rest of the people. So that was very concerning. I saw you tonight taking some notes, so I appreciate that, listening to the people. And a lot of people take time to email in to the council. I'm not sure if that was included in what you said, that you would expect all council members to read the packet, staff reports, and all factual information. A lot of people spend a lot of time trying to get their feelings, their thoughts, their opinions heard, and to do what's best for Capitola. Tonight, with the Treasure Cove on mind, I have ADA issues with my mother and accessibility issues and pivoting future into the Park Avenue realignment, or whatever that's called. Be mindful of the elimination of the parking spaces and what that would do to ADA accessibility. Or we can have that right now. We have 26 parking spots, we have parking next to Grove, and the plan that stares down into Bright Beach is not ADA accessible. That's just terrible. We can't, I know Capitola has an ADA plan, so we can't deviate from that just because RTC or Ford or whoever is pushing this agenda to check a box that they say they created a trail in Capitola. We have a good Class II bike lane, we have a good pedestrian sidewalk. We don't need to combine those together in the original intent of the trail. It rotted more, mentioned Coastal Side Trail will connect to the trails to the Bluff. That's the intent of the ultimate trail or the ultimate, ultimate trail. So please keep in mind, ADA, what we've done for Treasure Cove is awesome, and we need to continue to be mindful of that for the citizens of Capitola and the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Kathy Howard. I just wanted to bring to your attention that the TV and the sound doesn't always come through so we can listen and watch this at home. I specifically have that cable TV so I could hear and could see what's going on. There's times it comes through, but I would say 95% of the time, the sound doesn't come through. So could you please have someone check that before the meeting so we're, it's available to us? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none? Bring that to staff comments.
I have one announcement this evening. We are recruiting for board and commission members for a couple of our, three of our different boards. We're looking for a position, someone who wants to volunteer to be on the Art and Cultural Commission, the Museum Board, and the Commission on the Environment. So if you're interested in applying, check out our website.
Thank you. I'll bring us to council comments.
Yes, thank you. And thanks to the Jade Street folks that are on their way out, but I'm really excited to see this go through. I was wondering if we can connect with the Cabrillo Mobile Home Estates and see if it's within the percentage that we had accepted for rent control.
Staff is working on this actively. Do you want more of an update than that? I know that we were looking for, working through the rent control ordinance, we're also working with our city attorney's office about compliance with the ordinance, but Katie can provide more details if you want a little bit more.
Yeah, I think that might be helpful. Thanks, Katie. Thank you. So I have been working closely with the Castle Mobile Home Park HOA. This Charlotte, who spoke earlier. And the process outlined in our rental ordinance, or rent, mobile home rent increase ordinance, is first, the mobile homeowner approaches the residence with documentation of a rent increase. And then the second step is for a meeting to occur, and that occurred yesterday. And I believe there's another meeting that will occur next week, and that's when the Mobile Home Park residents have the ability to try to negotiate with the owner. So there was one last night, and then I believe next Thursday. The city will then have an open process of accepting petitions from anyone that does not feel like the rent ordinance has been, or the rent amount is fair and can petition the city. And then we go out and we hire an independent arbitrator to review all the documentation provided by the park and the, any. and the, any, anyone from the park that has put in a petition. So we are actively working on this and engaged with both the park and the attorney for the park. So.
Okay.
See you after.
Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
And then just one more thing. Unfortunately, on April 2nd, I will not be able to attend our town hall. I want to thank our staff and the RTC for joining together to create an open forum for our community. I just have a previous commitment that was installed a long time ago in my schedule, so I apologize. I will be watching from afar, and I hope everybody can gain some great knowledge on that day.
Councilmember Peterson?
I'll just say that I really appreciate everybody who donated to the Treasure Cove Playground and the county park friends. And we're really appreciative to have community come together like this for this great project.
Thank you. Just to echo what Councilmember Peterson said about the Treasure Cove, I think one thing that I think we should acknowledge too is the vision and a lot of work that Avette Brooks put into it. I know her name wasn't mentioned tonight, but I know she was a huge advocate in getting that project going, so I think that's important, just to note that. So a couple of things. I attended last Friday night, the Capital Sukal Chamber Event, where we recognized, and I just real quick just run through them. Person of the Year, Joe Paladroni. Business of the Year, Capital Candy. Community Spirit was Friends of the Capital Library, Branch Library. The Youth of the Year Award winner Jed DeFaro. Educator of the Year, Nina Norads. And then the Lifetime Achievement Award winner was Susan Westman, which I think was a great evening. And really think the Chamber did an amazing job. I see that Kathy Howard's still here, and I was going to recognize her tonight. I understand that there was retirement with, from Kathy, from her services here as a chaplain at Capital PD. And I'd just like to personally acknowledge the service that you gave to Capitola, and thank you very much for that. And then I was down in the village the last couple of days, and I see that PG is doing some testing, which is great to see that ongoing and looking forward to their findings coming out for that and helping our community understand the testing that they're doing down there and what those results will be. And I know they're still working on the report. And then just the one quick question, and I don't know if it's totally scheduled yet, but for the city manager, is there a timeframe that we'll be looking at in the near future with the Depot Hill Walkway issue? Just trying to address the community, what the timeframe might be looking like for that?
Yes, it's coming up next meeting. So April 10th, I believe, is the date. Second Thursday in April.
All right, thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. So first of all, I wanted to thank Mariah and Dan, who aren't here anymore, but Friends of the Capitola, Santa Cruz County Parks, for their presentation and all the heart and the dedication and the love and the care and the passion they put into the project. I was there at that GOAT Body Combat Class that was a fundraiser for Treasure Cove at Jade Street Park last year. And as a mom of three young kids, there isn't a park in this community that my kids don't love. And one of their favorites, which is Leo's Haven, which is the first universally accessible playground in our county, is their absolute favorite. I'm really proud that Capitola has had the vision to build this inclusive, forward-thinking project that will benefit all people regardless of their ability. And as a family nurse practitioner, I deeply understand the need of our community members to feel a sense of significance and belonging. Having open community spaces that promote connection, engagement, and a sense of community really help people thrive. I'm in full support of this project and can't wait to see it break ground in the, in the near future. I was also at the Capitola Sukal Chamber of Commerce Gala last Friday, and it was a great evening, and City of Capitola was well represented. We celebrated many of the honorees, including our Planning Commissioner, Susan Westman, for the very first Lifetime Achievement Award. Friends of the Capitola Library won the Community Spirit Award and plans to donate their proceedings to installing solar panels at our library. I wanted to congratulate all of the other honorees, including Joe Paladroni, Nina Norid, Capitola Candy Company, and Joe Del Faverro. We are very fortunate to have such amazing and inspiring individuals in our community. I also want to add a note, you know, to the families out there who are stressed about enrolling into summer camps because they have school-aged kids. I feel you. It's insanely difficult and immensely competitive to get into summer camps. It's March, and already there have been multiple camps that have filled up quickly. I've failed to enroll my kids on multiple ones, and I am currently on the waitlist for Camp Capitola for my kids. I know I've mentioned this to Nikki, and she's not here today in the past, but we really need to support our families and our youth, especially for the youngest cohort in the Little Campers that are four and five years old. My middle one was in the Little Campers one year, but we couldn't get into every session because they're very limited. Our TK kids, right, for working parents, this will be a need because they won't have school in the summertime, and we need to find a way to expand that capacity for this group. So I hope we can work on that in parks and wrecks. And I would like to acknowledge the comments that the public have made in criticizing the way I speak and reading my comments. As everyone is aware, I am new to my job, and with this new job comes a high learning curve. I completely acknowledge the fact that, yes, I write my notes ahead of time, as with many of you in the podium who read your notes, because you want to make sure you articulate and concise and clear with, with what you're trying to deliver. I hope, I know this is a growth opportunity for me, and I totally embrace it. I hope very soon I will be able to just bullet point and be able to read, I mean, talk about the things I want to say. So I hope you guys will be patient, and thanks.
Well, I have the disadvantage of being the last one to speak, and I would like to echo the sentiment across the table here. As we know, we've had some contentious times, and it's nice that we have Treasure Cove because it's such a positive thing. Countywide, what a great program. Super excited about it. Want to touch on Kathy Howard. She's not, was not only the chaplain here in Capitola, but she was a longtime chaplain with the Sheriff's Office where I worked. So her service is awesome, doesn't, doesn't go unseen. Thank you very much. That'll bring us to item seven, consent items. Items A through F.
I'd like to pull item D for a very brief overview. If that's possible.
We'll pull item D, and if it's going to be brief, we can address it now and then just take the vote afterwards.
Yeah, thanks. Just to explain, I think this is a really exciting and critical project that will help to facilitate economic development in Capitola. So just wanted to share with us and the public here a little bit more about it. Thanks.
Great. I do have a few slides if you would like me to run through them or I can just, yeah? I've got a few, and I'll be quick, I promise. I'll do the highlights. So we're, we had published a 41st Avenue Corridor Plan, RFP, recently, and we had six different firms apply for the, put in proposals. And tonight, we're looking at executing an agreement with SWA Group for preparing the 41st Avenue Corridor Plan. Next slide, please. So the background on this is in the past, in 2009 and 2011, the city did two different economic development studies. One was tied to the general plan update. Next slide, please. For implementation following that, we've streamlined permits for commercial uses. We've also allowed vertical and horizontal mixed use in our commercial zones and mixed-use zones. We've introduced new sidewalk standards, and we had redevelopment funds, which we no longer have, unfortunately, but towards Capital LaMall and the Metro Transit Center. Next slide. And there were nine items listed in the staff report that we haven't completed yet. Of those, seven will be completed within this corridor study. As you can see, the box is checked on this slide. So really looking, if we can go to the next slide, at the focus of this is really looking at assessing our current infrastructure along 41st Avenue Corridor, looking to make, have it more of an identity and brand and initiating, like inviting the public and stakeholders to get involved, looking at traffic and safety improvements. I rode the corridor to get pictures this morning. Wasn't fun. I'll say that on my bicycle, so. And then we'll conclude with a corridor plan that has a menu of ideas and options for us and pricing that's connected to that and to move forward. On the next few slides, I'll go very quickly. So the consultant group, as I mentioned, is SWA Group. They're very qualified. They've done projects previously that we're very impressed with. Next slide. So really looking at place making and branding, updating landscaping and having a landscaping plan. Next slide. Enhancing the public realm, looking at things such as interactive seating, signs, wayfinding, lighting, looking for more areas for public space. Next slide. And then right away, right-of-way improvement. Sorry, that's not a great picture, but looking at how we can improve 41st Avenue. Next slide. So phase one will be project initiation and background analysis. Next slide. Phase two, visioning and concept developments, really hearing from the public what they'd like to see in this plan and then coming up with a few different options. Next slide. Then we'll get to concept design refinement. So the first step in this is to come back to council, similar to what we did with the Wharf, show you different concepts, and then go back out for discussion on the different concepts and where, see where we land. And then following slide is to finalize and have a phasing strategy. So with that, the overall budget is $105,000. We've got REAP funds, which is grant money, and then also general fund money that was budgeted for last year. Next slide. And tonight, we're looking for the city council to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with SWA Group for the preparation of the 41st Avenue Corridor Study in an amount not to exceed $105,000. But thank you.
Thank you. Since that item was pulled, I'll open it up to a public comment. Seeing none? I'll bring it back to council. Either we can have comments or we can look for a vote.
Thank you, Katie, for being prepared. I would like to move all the consent items, 7A through F. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bring us to General Government. Item A, 2025-2029 Strategic Plan.
Thank you so much, Mayor Clark and council. It's nice to see you this evening, as it is nice to see the community. I first just want to start before I get into the presentation with a huge and sincere thank you, not only to council, our former council members, but mostly the community and also our staff for the contribution to this plan. We, we tried to incorporate everyone in this process, and I really appreciate the patience and the guidance from everyone involved, so thank you. And also to our amazing team at Barry Dunn. It's just me tonight, so I apologize. I'm not as efficient as Maddie, as you got used to her over the months here, but also to thank them for this process. So thank you. We'll just jump in, going to try to keep it brief and then be available for questions with some background. As you know, this project started way back in fiscal year 2324 with that council goal setting when we were directed to develop a strategic plan, and the budget allocation made that same fiscal year. And really a conversation around, we need a flexible plan, something that's living and that is really relative to the day-to-day and to anything that may change as we move forward. So we've had plenty of milestones from since then. You approved the contract in December of 2023. Early last year, we, staff got started working with our consultant, Barry Dunn, as I mentioned. And we did, with your direction, of course, determine to pause the project until this past fall to really let some very important work complete, such as our Wharf project. So in September, at the Wharf opening, which was exciting enough, we had a public kickoff of this project, had our initial outreach that October. November, you were involved in the public city council workshop that included council at the time and the two candidates that we also had, so everyone here was involved. Then there was some work that our, that our consultant and that staff put in to create a draft plan, and that was presented during a council meeting in February. There was a public review period, and I'm going to get into that a little bit. But ultimately, we landed on a plan, and I'm really excited to share it with you this evening. So next slide should be an overview. Okay, so yes, feedback, we did outreach. We had some Boy Scouts give their input. We tried to hit everybody. There was a postcard sent out to all city residents in English and Spanish later on in the outreach period. So yes, I forgot I had included some of these images. And then our next slide is work that you yourselves did. So there was a lot of visioning, note-taking, very interactive process, and that's just kind of to remind you of that. And then to go into a few more details, here is our plan at a glance. So I promise it looks pretty. The initial draft included in the agenda packet was just the words. So we do have the visuals up and available on the website currently, and we're going to walk through a little bit of that this evening. But here you'll see, we have our mission, vision, and values, and then our six strategic priorities in this wheel on your right. So that's our plan at a glance. But moving forward, and I promise we'll get into that. Just a reminder, so we did a lot of public outreach, and this is kind of a combination of all of the different ways I tried to encourage the public to be engaged in this process. But most recently, with the public review period, thank you to our clerk who's handing out a few printed versions. Feel free, please, take a look at them while I'm talking. Like I mentioned, we had a bilingual postcard mailed to all city residents with a QR code that took them directly to our online portal to collect feedback for review. I am not making this up. I promise that Maddie from Barry Dunn said, of all the cities she's worked with, we had the most public input at that stage of the process. So we heard this a lot, that Capitola is special, and you might be right about that. So that was really, really lovely to hear. We had more than 2,000 visits to the site during that one month, and about 200 people completed the survey about the actual plan. So excellent. So from that, we did make a few tweaks to really adjust the mission and vision statement because of the, you'll see later in the presentation, but the feedback on our values and the strategic priorities was overall positive. There was positive feedback around our mission and vision as well. However, if you move forward in the slideshow, you'll see the top bar, I really just want you to focus on, the majority of people that responded agreed that the proposed mission statement should be revised. So hearing that, we did follow Barry Dunn's advice, and they captured some comments around what people felt should be changed. And this second version of the mission statement here with the bolded words, it's just tweaked to really represent more of what the public feels it should say. So there were comments around making sure connection and belonging are more specific. They didn't want vague language, which is understandable, putting more language and goals around improving the quality of life with community engagement. So you'll see this revised mission statement. I'm hesitating because I don't really want to read the screen to you, but you'll see there are just a few changes that I hope make it representative of what council, staff, and the public and the residents want. So with our vision, we did- So with our vision, we did something similar. We had your, the proposed draft vision that you kind of came up with in February and then after the recommended changes based on public feedback. This does read slightly different than the original, but I think the spirit is there. The city of Capitola is a thriving, family-friendly community that prioritizes resident needs while fostering a healthy balance between sustainable tourism, economic growth and coastal environment and lifestyle. So really the resident needs shines through in that statement. So again, just a little bit of feedback from the public on the next slide. It shows that there were people that said they wanted the statement revised and so we listened, we incorporated the feedback, and here's the revised statement. So I think we can skip through here, just backing up what I just said, perfect. And values, the proposed values are on the screen. In the next slide, you'll see that the majority of people that took the survey supported all values. There were a few people here and there that wanted one, they had to list which one would you not include. So it was very varied in that and ultimately, the values were supported. And we found similar feedback on the next slide regarding the six strategic priorities. And this is a very fun wheel, which I love. So we have like a key image that represents each priority and that's reflected throughout the plan. So we have accountable government, attainable housing, community safety, economic opportunity. This is a long one, healthy families, community and environment, and then sustainable infrastructure. So those are the six strategic priorities that, again, if you see on the next slide, were generally supported. People supported all of them with, again, just smaller amounts of people kind of picking at one or two of them. So, moving forward here, oh, this is just the ugly plan at a glance, sorry. You saw the prettier one earlier. We can just move forward. I would love to share the PDF of the full plan visuals. If our clerk could open that PDF and it's what you're looking at here, we can just quickly move through it so that the community can see. But considering that, if the council is to adopt the plan this evening, next steps around that would be, this document will help staff guide you and staff with the budgeting process and some other things as well. So, thank you to our clerk for her support. So I'm really pleased, it was really fun to look at the visuals, but there's introduction language or table of contents, this is something that can be available online for our public to really dive into. Some friendly faces are about to pop up here. There you are. And then really, when we get into the specific priorities, you know, deeper into the document, it dives into those six priorities. So you have the at-glance document, the one pager basically that goes through the whole plan, and then we dive into each priority with the specifics and then the measurable outcomes to show how the city has achieved these goals. And again, this is on the website for people to take a look at now. And then once an if is adopted, we can move forward with producing copies and having those in our community. So you get the idea. I'll pause so you can admire. The summary of all the engagement and all of the real detailed numbers on who was communicated with and what kind of feedback they provided, which is great. And then thank yous. So with that, we'll just go back to next steps and I can take questions. So other than guiding our budgeting process, we are proposing to maintain a strategic plan website online that allows for transparency and access to the plan and also kind of how we move forward with, again, achieving those goals. And there will be an implementation plan, which is much more detailed and not as attractive, probably, with specific projects tied to each of these priorities and the performance measures, and that will be used at a staff level and can be shared with council. And then, at your direction, we can also plan to review the plan on two or three-year cycles. It's really up to council's discretion at that point. So really, unless there's questions, the recommendation this evening is to adopt our strategic plan. And again, I thank you so much for all of your input through this process.
Thank you. That's a great informational presentation. Thank you for that. Well, with the questions, Councilmember Jensen.
Yeah, thank you. So first of all, Chloe, thank you for your leadership on this. You and I have had some conversations regarding strategic plans and the strategic plans I've been involved with in my previous employment and stuff, and I think we did a great job. I would like to propose that we maybe look at this plan. I know on a refresh I saw up there, which was exciting, of a two to three year, of being a brand new plan, maybe if we could look at it in a one-year snapshot and then get into, I think, I think it's a tool that we should start to use, but I'm disappointed, you know, I'll just start myself, in the sense of the lack of involvement that we had, even though we had 2,000 people, you know, attend to have a plan developed off a 200 people's response. You know, I think our community gets involved, we get, when we want projects and we want donations, we get donations. When we have beach plans, we have tons of people show up to beaches. And I think our community needs to, you know, look at this document and see how important of a document this is moving forward to the city. If we're going to use it for budgeting or setting mission and what our council as a director for us to go to, we should make sure that our community is involved in that document more than what they weren't. I think, again, you and the consultant did a great job and the city did, in trying to do the outreach was amazing. But again, if there isn't the involvement from the community, we can't get that. So I think that'd be important to make sure that we can, now the document's out, now I think it's more of a, like, oh, they do have a strategic plan and then what does that look like? And then how can we encourage our community to be more involved? And so hopefully, we could listen to other council members' comments about that as a sooner refresh. Things I looked at when I did, I did, like went through, I did like a word search on it. And so I looked at like, you know, there's some keywords, you know, seniors was mentioned, I think, one time in the report. And, you know, with 25% of our community at seniors, you know, how can we go and take this document to them? Do we go up to the senior center and tell them that we have this document and get their more involvement and stuff like that? And also, another thing with youth, I think it was listed two times and there, I looked up, it's like 16% of our population. So how can we go to the school district or involve with other user groups and say, you know, we, we have this document, but, you know, how can you be more involved in it? And so I just think that was important. And so I looked at those numbers and use that as a driving thing. And then I also looked at, was it a weighted involvement thing? Because like regarding housing, which I think is extremely important, it was mentioned 22 times in the same report. And so, you know, I like to make sure that we look at, you know, we're tapping the seniors, we're talking to the youth, and showing this document, which I think now, like I said, is important and that we can build from is, is something that I think is going to be important as looking at going forward. But again, thanks for all your hard work. I totally support the document. Just like to see it have a quicker turnaround for review and to enhance it so it's better. So that's all my comments. Thank you.
Hey Chloe, thank you so much for your presentation and for all of your hard work. This looks fantastic. It's so easy to read, it's beautiful. I also agree, I agree with Councilmember Jensen in that this should be a living document that can be adaptable and can change depending on what our strategic priorities are. And it should be updated every three to five years. But otherwise, great job.
Questions?
I don't have any questions, but I will support if we wanted to start with a one-year review leading into it and then seeing if we want to push that out as we move on, that's fine with me.
Excuse me, I wanted to ask about the implementation plan that you mentioned and when that will be available.
I don't have an exact date, but I would anticipate within the next month or so and certainly with plenty of time to start our budgeting process.
Great. Great, thank you. Yeah, it's a great document. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. I would agree. My question would be if we could make it viewable every year and so we can build on it, would be great. With that being said, let's open it up to public comment. Welcome.
Talking about public health, yes, as part of the document. And also you talk about, we want the community welcoming to everybody. Many of us don't feel well around the cell towers and electrical pollution, et cetera. This is a publication called Learn the Risk and the topic is the reality of our health. The United States is sicker than ever. The US spends more than any other country on healthcare, yet has more chronic health issues than any other country. It's kind of shocking figures here. Half of all adults in the United States have a chronic illness and nearly half will eventually die of cancer. We are exposed to a cocktail of synthetic chemicals from birth, polluted air and water, electrical frequencies that used to belong only to space, and processed food laced with pesticides to add, which we add pharmaceutical drugs, including vaccines into the mess. Pharmaceutical drugs and vaccines contain multiple synthetic chemicals that should never be put into the body. They are part of the reason we have skyrocketing chronic health issues that have somehow become the new normal in our society. But this is not normal and the science is clear. Most, if not all, of these health issues can be linked to pharmaceutical treatments and drugs. In fact, the healthcare system is now the leading cause of death in the United States. And we've just gone through this COVID injections, and I'll leave you another article on this. But in this strategic plan, I think we really need to emphasize removing sources of harm like pesticides and electrical pollution, to name a few. I was by the ocean here and it looked like this Capitola jurisdiction that the side of the road has been sprayed. I don't know if you use Roundup or what. Also on Park Avenue from this parking lot out to the freeway, there is this light of, you know, a line of death there.
Thank you, ma'am. Wrap it up, please.
Is Capitola using poisons on the road? I'd like to know.
Thank you. Welcome.
I don't know if this is the proper time to say that, this, but what I've noticed with Capitola is there's a huge gap between our age and your age. We have had a plan in order for years that has functioned really well with this city and people participating. And just with Director Jensen saying only 2,000 people replied, to me, that's a tragedy. The reason is, is because there's such a gap. We have young people that weren't even born when some of this was. And I would like to suggest to the city that they, and I can't speak for her, but, but we have Karen, we have Susan Weissman, we have several people who are extremely knowledgeable about what was passed. And we have all of our young people who come in and work their fannies off with what is the future. We need a bridge. I would like to see that there would be a committee where they could sit down, share some of the old things that functioned well, with allowing the younger people to see what has functioned. So it gives us a larger selection of how we should go about what we do. There has been several gaps that really rile and separate the people here. One of them tonight is the next agenda, so people will get up and speak about that. But there's a division because it's, it's with the gossip that it's just for the Rantland Trail. Well, no, it's not. But there needs to be some education that goes back and forth so that people don't respond in an angry way because they got left out. We'd like to know what's going on and we'd like some real good communication. So if you could set some committees or something where people could spend two or three hours and share some of that knowledge, I think it would be really beneficial.
Thank you. Welcome.
I guess I'm going to speak a few times tonight. I just have a question for you. Your report says that you spoke to 30,000 people. There's only 10,000 people in this city. So who are these other people you were speaking to?
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment? Bring it back for council deliberation. No, you don't answer the questions at this time. Thank you. Won't take note. Thank you.
I'd like to move the recommended action.
I'll second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Orbach?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Clark?
Aye.
And just for the clarification, that'll be on a one-year, would that be your motion? Just to clarify, we'll look at it in the one year.
Would you like to amend, friendly amend the motion?
The motion has already passed.
Thank you. Moving forward.
I did put it in the minutes that the council discussed reviewing the strategic plan in a year, so it is in the record.
Thank you for the clarity. That'll bring us to item 8B. Stockton Bridge Replacement Project Design Amendment. Not at this time, no. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Next slide, please. We're here to discuss the, an amendment to a current contract we have with CSW for the replacement of the Stockton Bridge Design and Environmental. So the purpose of this item is an initial step to ensure the vehicular path of travel over the creek is maintained for future generations and to reduce flooding risk. So this is a long-term development process. I would estimate about a decade, replacement of bridges. There are 21,000 municipal-owned bridges in the state of California. It's a very long list of repairs that need to be done and funded by the state and federal government. So these are very long-term projects. Parts of this project include community engagement, which would be over the life of the project from design to construction, environmental compliance, design and engineering, and then obviously funding. Next slide, please. So for a little bit of background on this bridge, again, this is our city-owned bridge, but they are inventoried and inspected by Caltrans on an every other year basis. It has a bridge ID and a particular position in the state database. And it's the sole Capitola vehicular crossing apart from the highway between the two sides of town. The traffic volume is estimated between 15,000 and 20,000 vehicles per day. Next slide, please. So it is a concrete box girder bridge. It was constructed in 1934. It is the oldest type of this bridge in the state of California. It has replaced an older wooden and iron bridge. It was a New Deal bridge constructed in about 150 days and $25,000. It is 138 feet across with a center span and two in creek piers. Next slide, please. And this is a picture provided by our historical museum of the bridge approximately a decade after it was built. Next slide. So again, this is the oldest of this type of bridge in the state of California. There are multiple bridges upstream of this, including the Porter Street Bridge, the bridge at SoCal Drive and the bridge at Highway 1, all of which was in a 20 to 40s era bridges. All of since have been replaced since that time. The SoCal Drive Bridge replaced twice. So there have been long-term flooding concerns across SoCal Creek and all these bridges. Flooding at SoCal Creek due to debris jams occurred in 1937, 1940, 1955, which required the replacement of that bridge in 1956, and then in 1982, which we also have historical records of Stockton Avenue Bridge being damaged significantly in that 1982 large storm. It is documented that this has been a concern. It is documented that this has been a concern of the city since the early 1950s, and the real concern here is that the narrowest span of the bridge between the pier and the bank is approximately 10 feet, and typical large debris that comes through there is significantly larger than that and gets caught. Next slide. We've seen that most recently in our '22, '23 storms, where we did have a contractor out there in a crane to address some of that debris before it became a flooding issue. Next slide. So as I said, these bridges, like all public bridges in the state of California, are inspected by Caltrans on a biannual basis. The last time our bridge was inspected by Caltrans was in 2024, which was after the bridge was repaired from the 2022, '23 storm damage. And very briefly, the things that they look at to rate a bridge are the deck condition, so that is the pavement, the driveway, the superstructure, which is the actual span, and then the substructure, which are the piers. And so they put ratings to that, and they give it what's called a sufficiency rating. So currently, the deck is considered poor, the superstructure is considered fair, and then the substructure is also considered fair. They don't do a internal, this is all just a visual, and it's significantly visual with engineers who do this on a daily basis, but it is not any kind of X-ray or any kind of like internal evaluation of this. So the sufficiency rating from the bridge from Caltrans is 60.6, which makes it funding-eligible for repair and replacement with federal dollars, and is considerably structurally deficient, which is based on it having the poor rating of the deck, which is considered a key load element. That does not mean that the bridge is unsafe. It is just this is the category that Caltrans puts it in. Next slide. So potential risks of the bridge as it currently stands is obviously normal wear and tear, as any roadway is. Coastal storms, we do have flow that goes both ways in some of our severe coastal storms that with debris hitting the piers. Concrete decay and rebar corrosion, which we have had noted on those Caltrans reports in the past, just generally that it's a 1934-era bridge. It was built prior to the use of pre-stress concrete, and that it had older reinforcement standards, which notably were changed in the late 1940s and multiple times since then. So really, all that means is as the bridge ages, it will continue to have issues, as any piece of infrastructure would, and that eventually that'll lead into reduction of load rating, which is the weight you can have across the bridge. So eventually, fire trucks, large delivery vehicles, public buses wouldn't be able to reverse the bridge. Also existing would be catastrophic risks, such as debris jams, as noted before, and then also earthquake, because obviously this predates our modern seismic codes that are generally revised with every large earthquake, so 1980s, 1991, et cetera. So right now, our current step is looking at considering moving forward with preliminary engineering, which includes public outreach and some environmental clearance. How we got here was a little bit of a long road. So in our local hazard mitigation plan, first developed in 2013 and revised in 2020 and is currently being updated with the county in 2025, identified the bridge itself as critical for flood management hazard being the facility most at risk in the city. So to that end, council had staff develop a due diligence memorandum to look into debris diversion, and that was a concept level only. That's what's called like a literature review, so there was no hydraulic analysis or anything like that done with that review. It was really evaluating debris diversion methods. So from that, there was a recommendation made. In 2022, '23 budget, there was $350,000 allocated to looking into this project, and then later in the year, State Senator Laird, through the budgeting process, we received $500,000 to look into evaluating fully, doing that actual scientific, you know, analysis, and then constructing a debris diversion method. So to that end, we did that feasibility study that was brought to the council in, completed in 2024, brought to the council in November, where we went over debris diversion methods that were in that due diligence 2016 memorandum. At that meeting, council directed staff to move forward with pursuing a bridge replacement project. Next slide. So to dig into that feasibility study just a little bit, we have a professional services agreement with CSW ST2, which is also our consultant working on our Cliff Drive project, with the study objectives of analyzing the actual debris flow patterns in our creek and the hydraulic behavior of our creek to the debris diversion methods in that memorandum. Additional considerations for evaluation were environmental impacts, permitting requirements, because if you can't get a permit, you can't build it, and then cost analysis. And so in brief, these are the methods that were in that memorandum that were then evaluated. The diversion piers, the cages, pier sweepers, and bridge replacement are really aimed at either catching debris or diverting debris around the piers, or in the case, removing the barrier altogether. Next slide. This was also presented during that November meeting to council, and really what it came down to is two of the options really limited the hydraulic flow of the creek and were really not effective in the goal of debris management. The other two were less effective and really trapped smaller trees, which became significant maintenance issues. So from that study, the recommendation was to pursue bridge replacement as obviously most cost, but also most effective in reaching the goals of debris management. Next slide. Also presented during that meeting was a recognition of this bridge having historical significance and contributing to the community character, really since the bridge was built. It has been part of the city's landscape. We don't let teenagers jump off of it anymore, but there are definitely events built around the bridge and is really as iconic as some of the niches in the village that everybody really identifies as Capitola. Next slide, please. Also, it's very important to note the really big importance in connectivity across both sides of town, and also that some of the pedestrian and other uses of transportation over this bridge are really limited. This is not ADA compliant. There are manholes across the entire sidewalk of this bridge. Next slide. Here, there was a, this is a rendering that was part of the proposal. It is potential, but not, obviously not something that we would go with without council direction of what a new bridge could look like, and there is real opportunity to keep all the aesthetic features, perhaps some of the actual aesthetic components, onto a new bridge structure with removing the piers. Next slide. So council direction for that meeting in 2024 was to pursue bridge replacement as a long-term flood mitigation, and really acknowledge that there are many additional steps to get there prior to final engineering and construction. So to that end, we asked our consultant to provide us with a proposal to amend their contract to get to the 35% design, which is really where you can engage with Caltrans and other funders to get to the point of 100% design and construction funds. Next slide. So a little bit of a word about our consultant, CSW ST2. They're a civil engineering, land surveying, and planning firm based in Marin County since 1952. They have done a multitude of bridge replacement projects, most recently the Marana Road pedestrian bridge replacement in the county of San Mateo. That was a pretty contentious project. It involved a lot of coastal commission hearings, and that was installed earlier this year, I want to say. And then the Bayfront Boulevard in the city of Hercules, which is a brand-new project, which involved a lot of public outreach because they were really starting from scratch there, and it was a big community push to determine what type of crossing for that creek they were looking for. More locally, their subs, which is the main engineering firm on the project, Biggs Cardoza has worked locally on the Watsonville Slough. Next slide, please. So the scope of work involves many steps to get us through a 35% preliminary design, and again, to a point where we can go pursue funding for construction of this project. So a concept design developing really the aesthetics of what this project would look like, also the structural design, considering the utilities that run through it, grading and drainage of the banks, that kind of thing. Environmental clearance, which is CEQA NEPA, obviously, but also really includes other things like biological, talking about the fish in the creek, the other animals in the creek, cultural and historical assessments. Those are all part of the environmental clearance that are required by Caltrans and CEQA NEPA to do this type of project. Also, when there is public engagement generally, and then also stakeholder coordination, and then also developing all of that technical documentation that you need with the bridge, and then obviously managing the project. Next slide. So again, this is kind of the steps we're at to get to a final design constructible project. We have our project identification and feasibility that is complete. Today, we're asking you to fund the preliminary design, and then the final design, we would be able to fund, potentially be able to fund externally, to get that 65, 95% plans and specifications engineering, and all the really fine details that you need to actually construct this piece of infrastructure. Next slide. So the funding for this project, we currently have $850,000 allocated towards this project, $350,000 in city funding from fiscal year '22, '23, and then that state funding through the Department of Water Resources. The amendment for CSW would bring their project budget to $840,000, and again, future funding opportunities could be FEMA, state and federal grants, the Highway Bridge Safety Program, and really, some of those you cannot even apply for without this 35% design. Next slide. So this is the recommended action, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. We'll start, where did I leave off last time? We'll start on this side.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. So I'm wondering if this 35% plan or concept, is that going to include, like, the work of the project itself, like while the bridge is being worked on, how our city will navigate during that time, whether it'll be a pedestrian bridge, whether we would have other modalities of using that area during construction?
That is definitely part of the CEQA NEPA process, yes.
Okay, great. And then, how, so have we measured our load rating and see if there was like a number associated with our load rating on the bridge?
So to do that, you would need to do a study, which would require some of that x-raying. I will say that this bridge is very old. Actually, part of the supports are wood, and so we would have to have someone come and assess that. We have no reason to believe that we need to reduce the load rating on that bridge, but we also have not, to my knowledge, the city has not done any type of that investigation.
Okay. And then in some of the earlier slides, there were the individual ratings, like one was four, and that was poor, and then there was five, which was fair. What was that out of? Because I know we got the 60 total, but then each individual?
10.
Out of 10. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, I think that's all my questions for right now. Thanks. Oh, oh, wait. So my other thought, having a plan and action, obviously, nothing is going to happen tomorrow or within any of our time on council, but having a plan and action would potentially shorten the time of work done on the bridge, say, an emergency occurred. Say there was an earthquake and, you know, bridge falls out. If we have this conceptual design, we're already at the 35%, so then that moves us along quicker rather than just having to react quickly to an emergency.
For a permanent solution, yes. Yeah, it'd be very similar to our Wharf project, where we were fortunate to have a lot of the design work done prior to having the catastrophic incident that damaged it.
And then aside, sorry, aside from the engineering aspect, would there also be some type of more design, like more aesthetic design as part of this 35%, or is that something that would come later, like where we could actually work with, you know, like an architect or something less granule?
So typically, at 35%, you are not looking at a full-on architectural design. Part of the public outreach is to get some of that feedback, so when you move forward, you have a sense of what the community is looking for. So that is not what is being proposed today. It was staff's understanding that the council was looking for that historic preservation, and that was what that concept drawing was made on. Also, there are consideration, requirements of historic preservation that might limit some of the design details.
Okay, great. Thank you.
This is probably a difficult, if not impossible, question to answer, but I was curious if you had an opinion on how long the bridge could realistically last if we did not do anything before, you know, we just couldn't use it anymore.
We do do continual maintenance on the bridge, so when it is damaged, like it was damaged in '22, '23, we do those repairs. I will say, in general, we will get to the point where we need to reduce the allowable loads over the bridge, but as far as the timeline, that would be very difficult for me to provide right now.
Likely decades.
Perhaps.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the other questions have to do with the funding that we received from Senator Laird. I wanted to ask if that funding can be used for other infrastructure projects if we decide not to pursue the bridge at this time?
That funding specifically is for Stockton Avenue Bridge. And so if we want, we could return the funds, definitely, but we could not take those funds and spend them elsewhere.
But we could pursue the other flood mitigation strategies.
Correct. It does need to be for our bridge, and we would have to request a scope amendment to the state water board.
And then my final question was, how long do we have to decide what we do with that funding before we lose it?
So right now, the current in time for the scope of work that was provided to them, which is this scope of work based on council's direction from November, is the end of next calendar year.
And then it just goes away?
Potentially. We would have to ask for an extension. Exactly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I have many questions. So first thing, my understanding also, the bridge was registered in 1999 as a historical bridge, maybe not in the national registry, but on a local registry, and then also noted in capital, like municipal codes and stuff like that for historical bridging. So and then also, I just wanted to confirm, I was trying to do a lot of research, I just wanted to make sure some of my research that I did is accurate, so that's why my question is verifying this. And the last known log jam was in 1982, potentially, other than minor stuff that we've seen like in '22, the '22, '23 storm, is that correct?
On SoCal Creek in general, yes.
And then, and then since the bridges have been replaced upstream, and I think the last one, you said was the SoCal Bridge, was that 2003 or something like that?
I don't recall off the top of my head. It wasn't this slide, but in that, yeah.
Have we noticed any additional flooding? I know, because some of the log jams that happened in that, in that one picture they had illustrated was a massive backup, and then that looked like that, that bridge kind of created a dam. Now that that bridge has been replaced, we haven't seen that, that much of flow of debris coming down to the creek since that part. Like, that's one of the biggest concerns is, right, is our bridge is the last one, now all the other bridges have been done, and we haven't seen that yet, have we?
Not to my knowledge, no.
And my other question is, one of the things that was, I guess, and then the thing I did, I went back and watched, I was trying to educate myself. I attended the city council meetings, but I went back to really watch them, and so I wanted to just kind of reflect on some of those, that it was held at two different council meetings, right? The first one was a consent agenda-only item to start looking at the mitigation, is that correct, for the bridge? And that was on the 125, meeting of '24?
I believe there was one item to approve the contract, which was likely on consent, yes.
Right. And I think there, and I don't think there's any community comment around that, and I think there was just one question that was asked about that, was the possibility of like rail trail and stuff like that, could that be included, have the engineer look at that during that phase as we enter into that contract? I think I watched, I went back and watched the video on that as a concern to look at the future. the future, if there was going to be a new bridge recommended, that that can be included into the design element. I think that was from the 12524. And then there was the city council, I think the next time it came was November 14th. And I kind of went back and I was trying to watch to see how the council, all their work that they did and the city staff, how they got to the suggestion and the recommended to go straightforward to the replacement of the bridge. And so I looked back, and there was a total of seven comments made. I think three of the comments were just asking about the rating on the bridge and stuff like that. Two questions were how the bike paths work on the bridge. And I didn't see a lot of, and I think there was a question regarding the retrofitting of the bridge. My concern is just have we, what measures have we taken to understand, or if there's been any other community meetings about the historical valuation of the bridge, and what does that really mean, other than the remediation ideas, you know, were kind of recommended that the options, but it looked like it was just went from looking at those recommended options to just going to straight to bridge replacement. I was just wondering if there's any other community outreach or any other meetings that have happened, other than those two council meetings? One was just on the consent, and the other one was a staff report, which I think you gave, which was very detailed and appreciated. Was there anything else that we've done in that period of time?
There have been no other public meetings held since then.
And then I was looking also at the funding part of it. So the $350,000, that's general fund, so that's not restricted money, right? And then this $500,000 was for there. And that was really to look at for mitigation purposes? And then really, council took the decision that maybe the mitigation items weren't the best way, and then we should move forward to the bridge. But that money can be used either way. Is that correct? I mean, our money as general fund money can really be used anyway, but the John Laird's money, I wasn't involved in that meeting, and I couldn't find any research on it. Was that just strictly for helping to make sure there is no flooding and the mitigation part of it? And then rolling out of that, that money was just asked to roll into maybe the potential of a new bridge?
So the $500,000 is a grant. The title of it was debris mitigation at the Stockton Bridge, and that is what was included in the state budget. From that, we were required to put in a grant application from the Department of Water Resources, which we did, that reflected that scope of work based on the due diligence memorandum from 2016. We did the feasibility study as part of that scope of work. Council directed us to pursue a bridge replacement project. So we requested an amendment to that scope of work to the State Department of Water Resources to pursue the current scope that's being proposed this evening. So as far as the Department of Water Resources go, to amend this, we would have to amend the scope again to change course with the project. I will also say that in that amendment included the city's general fund money as part of achieving that scope of work.
And then one last thing, when I was reading the BCA report that they, was included in our documents from June 20, it was dated June 27, 24, that we, that the city council reviewed. On page four, it states that they did not inspect the inside of the bridge. It said that the manholes were not removed, so the inside of the bridge was not inspected, which was kind of concerning to me from that standpoint of maybe it's a bigger issue than we don't know if we haven't looked at on even on the inside of the bridge, or maybe it's not. Is that, was that really true, that, or was there another inspector that would have went inside there? But I saw on BCA, they said they inspected the bridge, they did a walk around, they went out in waders, they said, looked underneath the bridge, but they said they didn't access through the manholes.
That is correct. The inspection done as part of that feasibility analysis was the same type of inspection that is completed by Caltrans.
And if that, that's just, is that a cost, I mean, like, that would, if that be a real costly thing? I mean, like, I think that's, we talk about loading and stuff like that, it was just alarming to me that we might, not we as the city, but I mean, like, the inspection level hasn't gone to that degree to, I know there's x-raying and stuff like that, but being on the inside, is that, is that a real, a real costly thing to look at?
It is. It's about a $30,000 cost. It involves combined space and bringing in professional engineers who do that kind of thing. The feasibility analysis done was specifically on a hydraulic analysis with the piers, which do not include the structural analysis of the bridge.
I said that, that might be something we could all talk about, is, you know, making sure that our community completely understands what we're really dealing with, you know, are we dealing with a bridge that's rated at a 60.6, whatever it is, and there's other bridges in the community that has that? And then, or is there other additional inspection needed that we might have a bigger problem that might even change the perception or the topic of the conversation, or how, what the condition of the bridge is? So that's all my questions I have at this time, and thank you.
Hi, Jessica. Thanks for your presentation. You've actually answered, many of my questions are ready. But I have a couple more. What's the average useful life of public infrastructure like this bridge?
Typically, bridges are designed for 100-year lifespan.
Okay. That's, that's the response I got to when I Googled it. It was 75 to 100 years. So we're almost there. We're at 90. And I think we've hammered this already. We have the funding already allocated, half a million of the grant and 350,000, 350,000 in, that's earmarked from our 2022, 2023 budget. Hypothetical question, if the SoCal Bridge wasn't there during the 1982 storm, what would have happened?
So I, I wasn't there, so I wouldn't know. However, I will say that that, our bridge still took damage during that storm, even with all the debris caught upstream. And that could be from debris that came downstream, it could have been from debris that came from the ocean. That is, those specifics are not recorded, but the bridge did take damage that is recorded in our local hazard mitigation plan.
But if that bridge wasn't there, all those logs would have been at our bridge downstream? No?
I could not say. There's a potential.
Folks, can we keep the comments down? We'll get, we'll get to your guys' comments. Thank you.
That's all my questions. Thanks.
I have just a couple of questions. One, could we get the manholes in the interior of the bridge inspected?
That is within the scope of this proposal, yes.
And at the same time, could we possibly look at the feasibility or the purpose of repurposing the bridge and retrofitting it to make it safer?
There's a potential to repurpose elements of the bridge, definitely, that make it historic, or looking into that. I will not say that some of the quality, even in the Caltrans reports of, say, the railings are deteriorating. So there is definitely a potential to save some elements, but the bridge as a whole would be difficult to modify without destroying it.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
I have one other question. Are we allowed to do any mitigation in the creek with jurisdiction, like is fishing games and stuff like that? If you went up the creek all the way to, you know, to SoCal, are we allowed to trim trees? Or if there's trees that are falling down before they start to float down the river to hit the bridge? Is there regulations around that?
There are definitely regulations around that. It is limited. I know back in the past, probably in the 1983 era, we, our staff did go up the creek and do a lot of tree mitigation prior to storms. That definitely isn't allowed anymore. I think if things are imminent hazards, we have removed some trees that became public hazards in the past, but generally, we cannot just do general maintenance in the creek to remove large objects.
More like a permitted function would have to, like you would say, not you, but the city would say, we saw three trees have potential, have an arborist look them and probably talk to fish game or something to try to mitigate them during, whenever the bridge gets replaced, but like for the next storm. Do we inspect going up, up that way to, like, to present, to prevent things? I know it was talked about in the last council meeting back in November about mitigation work. Does that ever get looked at or permitted?
So that would be really restricted to imminent hazards, and many of the vegetation and large trees are on private property. So we, we only own like a specific portion of the bank there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, were we done with council questions? Great. We will open it up to public comment. Welcome.
Welcome. Jerry, thank you for your comments, because I think it's important to understand how this whole idea got started. At that November meeting, Councilmember Pedersen mentioned widening the sidewalks on the bridge to accommodate additional bicycle traffic. From there, it immediately morphed into log jams and floods. And three months later, here we are, wanting to spend $800,000 to design a new bridge. In the process, we've skipped a lot of steps that are required by Capitola ordinances. Ordinance 515 and ordinance 17.87 require that the city take several steps. I'll just paraphrase some of the highlights of ordinance 515. Its intent is to preserve significant historical structures. It identifies procedures to follow before you can modify any historically significant structure. It creates a register of historical features, and it identifies the structures that have to be preserved. And those structures are listed in ordinance 17.87. It defines historical features as special aesthetic or architectural characteristics that have been designated by the city council. It defines the procedure for establishing an historic feature designation. It requires the council and planning commission to make specific findings about the historical nature of the structure under consideration. Once approved by the Capitola, or once approved as a Capitola historical feature, the structure is added to the list of historical features. Finally, and most important, ordinance 315 or 515 requires a conditional use permit approved by the planning commission to modify any structure listed in the register of historical features. That hasn't been done. It also has to determine the proposed changes won't be detrimental to the historical feature before approving any permit. So ordinance 515 was adopted on April 22 of 1982. Ordinance 1787 is a list of the structures that have the historical features and are subject to ordinance 515. On July 15, 1999, a joint city council planning commission meeting designated nine structures with important historical features and codified them in ordinance 1787. Among those structures designated and put on the list of historical features was the Stockton Avenue Bridge. So this far, no hearings before the PC have been taken. There is no conditional use permit that was ever passed by the planning commission that would allow this to continue. And to spend $840,000 at this point, when there's no guarantee that those steps, if they're ever taken, will approve a bridge to be replaced, it's a ridiculous expenditure at this expenditure at this time.
Thank you, sir. The time is up. Appreciate it. Welcome.
So you have a lot of questions about the 1982 bridge in SoCal. I can help you with that. For most of you, what you don't know is I grew up on the SoCal Creek. My family has 13 acres there. And in the spring slash early summer of 1982, a group of men, one of which was my father, went to the chief of police in SoCal. There was a log jam up above, way up the neck of the creek, and he was asked to dynamite the logs at that time because they were trying to get the logs so they would not cause a problem in the winter. He chose not to do that, the chief of police, I'm sorry, the chief of fire. So because of that, that is what happened to the bridge in SoCal. Had he done what he was asked by the residents of SoCal to do in advance, that bridge would not need to be replaced. But the problem was, he would not do that. And to this day, if the public asks the city to come help them, or the city wants to go on public property to fix the logs, they can still do that. But I want you to know, it had nothing to do with anything, but the chief of fire would not take care of the problem in advance, and that's what happened to the bridge.
Thank you. Welcome.
The feasibility study shows that the village will flood even with the new bridge. So I don't know what we're doing here. If you take a look at it, it shows that it's a couple hundred feet above the bridge. It's about 110 feet wide at low flow, and then it's 290 feet wide at their design flow. So that 180 feet, most of that is going to be along River View. And once the water gets to River View, it's just going to go down the street and flood the village. And their study was done at low tide, so obviously at high tide. So according to the feasibility study, the village will flood with the new bridge. There's a couple other issues with the study that I see. One is that at high flow, the, you can carry a lot more sediment, and then at low flow, the sediment drops out, so the bottom of the creek changes. And they show the bottom of the creek at zero all the time, so they don't take that into account. And then the other thing that they don't take into account is that they have the bottom of the creek at zero. But the top of the creek, if you think of the Mississippi River, it's a, you know, 100 feet deep, and when it goes into the ocean, the top is at zero, the bottom's at minus 100. So they're ignoring that. They have the, the bottom of the creek at zero, so that's a third mistake they made. You have a flawed feasibility study, should be revisited. Any questions?
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I usually do script my remarks, but tonight I just listened and thought a little bit and thought I really should come up and share what I was thinking back there. I'm feeling like with the city right now, there's just a lot of these sort of piecemeal things getting thrown at us instead of a holistic view of what's going on. And the rail corridor is a good example of that, like, why just this piece instead of the whole thing and understanding the grant was for the whole thing? This is very similar in that we're talking about the Stockton Bridge on a piecemeal basis to a bigger problem with ingress and egress out of the village and town. We've got, not gotten an update on the Cliff Drive Resiliency Project in a long time. Our federal money there might be at risk. There was talks about making that a one-way street if we didn't have the funding to do a two-way street. Does that decision affect whether you go up, you know, Wharf Road or how you go through the village? Why are we not looking at that holistically with this? In addition, because of some offers that were made by the private residents between the Stockton Bridge and Cliff Drive to share our backyards, if that was of interest to people, something we've been sharing for years about an opportunity. I've been copied on things from the Coastal Commission, saying that a grant was recently issued a few months ago for a traffic study through all of Capitola for bikes and pedestrians and improved traffic, with the village being a focus area. You didn't approve that grant because you didn't have to, but it's out there and you should know about that. We need to look at that grant. We need to get that traffic study done. We need to understand what's going on with Cliff Drive. We do need to understand that $350,000 that could go back to the general fund could potentially be very useful in looking at things on a holistic basis instead of piecemeal. And I think the bridge has enough longevity to allow us to do that. And this sort of now thing does feel a lot more like it's driven by something other than debris mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I am back again. I walked my neighborhood and talked to my neighbors, and I talked directly to 15 neighbors on my street, and I talked to five neighbors up on Gepo Hill that I see daily when I walk up there. And I said, what do you think about the bridge? And they said, it's a boondoggle. It's been put through by people that want to put the bike trail through our village. And that's what started this whole thing. And they all had the same comment, who was the politician that came up with that idea of putting a bike trail through our village? Our village is crowded enough the way it is, and I certainly don't want to see a few thousand bicycles trying to get through there. And I don't think you guys should make any decision on this thing this evening until after the town meeting next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. So interesting report from KCRA News. They interviewed Caltrans, and they talked about what does a poor rating mean on a bridge? A rating of four can have various reasons, from low paint or needing sealing on the road. And a poor rating doesn't necessarily mean the bridge is unsafe. We're fair rating, and that means we are better than the poor rating, you know? During the study, we are at no seismic concerns for earthquakes right now. Council meeting on this previously was concerned about timing with conflicts with the Cliff Drive Resiliency work and disruption to businesses, communities, impact on traffic, timing different times to get grants. And in the feasibility or the mitigation efforts in report in 2016, one of them was trying to put, looking at debris fins. And if we put a debris fin in there, you got to raise the water up actually a foot and a half. So that's why those mitigations really weren't feasible to raise the water up a foot and a half for a debris fin. So from 2016, we did nothing. We had some major, major storms. We did not flood, you know? You can look through that history. So it seems like there's an ulterior motive to this bridge. The grant was for a reinforcement project, and we should really understand, you know, there's a bridge, you know, got 20, 30, 40 years, maybe. And before we even take away that traffic corridor, we should railbank the trestle, put bike and pedestrians there, and have a way to get through town. When we do try to replace this bridge, and if it's going to be like the Murray Street Bridge, take it three years, that's a pretty ridiculous one. They built it in 150 days. So please be mindful of the fact that there is mitigation efforts we can do before we have to replace this. And like Pedersen asked, it could be decades before this bridge needs to be replaced. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Capitol, Keith Galen. The, I want to applaud Jessica and her team for the, I thought they put together a great study on the bridge and stuff like that. But I just want to give you a few reasons why you can't make a positive vote on this tonight. Number one is, I think there's some critical information in light of transparency that are left out of the information provided to the public thus far. Number one is, some of them are simple, some are more complex. Number one is, what's going to be the duration of the study? I have no idea how long it's going to take for that. And number two, thank you, Alex, for asking the question. What's the longevity estimate for the bridge? Yeah, the average is 100 years, but I think without a true estimate. I can tell you, I worked three years, three summers for the county engineers in the state of Kansas, and became more familiar with bridge construction than I ever wanted to be. But I do believe that we would actually want to look at a full estimate of that bridge before we go touching it. And number two, number three, the fact is, again, the comment was made, that the original grant was for degree mitigation, not for looking at replacement. And another thing I think that's totally missing is, where's the estimate of the cost and the construction time if we'd say, "Go ahead and look at building this bridge if we decided that we needed to replace it"? We have no idea of, and of course, we know the cost is going to change, but the construction time, I think, could be fairly well given to us. And then finally, the issue of federal funding with FEMA. Everyone in the room knows the current status with the Fed government, and we have no idea what's going on there. I do have one last question, which is whether CSSST actually does also subcontract with the RTC. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I have a question. First, Jessica, thank you. That was a great presentation. It answered a lot of questions. My statement still is, communication? It's not happening. Make it happen so everyone knows what's really going on with this. My second question is, and it probably would be addressed to Jessica, Fish and Game does not allow the creek to be dug out. Am I correct? What happens with the snag on that? Because my husband was a permanent in the 70s and 80s here. I was here for the floods also. And the main issue of the creek has always been, they can't clean it out. And that has to do with Fish and Game. Do we have something backed up? Or is there a way to approach them for a special permission to dredge it out a little bit? Are we looking at raising the height of the bridge? What are we looking to do for these solutions? We have to do maintenance. All of us who own something know you have to take care of things. The bridge is old. But can these other things be addressed and taken care of before we move forward?
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I want to commend all these residents of Capitola in bringing up the problems with, you know, what's proposed here. I heard, and I think every single person had valid points that need to be considered by this city council. I heard this is a boondoggle to put the bike trail through the village. I agree with that. The study should be revisited. Critical information was not provided. And it seems to me, this bridge has withstood many storms. I think that this needs to go back, and it cannot be approved in accordance with your own city ordinance requirements that the first speaker brought up, that you have not adhered to. I just want to applaud everyone. I learned so much from the community members here that is kind of jaw-dropping, I would have not have known before. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, sir, you can't at this time. And I'm sorry, I can't. Thank you for the information, sir. Seeing no further public comment. We'll bring it back for council deliberation. We'll start it on this end.
Thank you. One of the responses, one of the questions I heard in the document that was issued about the projected cost of the bridge, I think the estimate between 17 and 20 million dollars. And the other part was, this is just phase one, the 840 is just phase one. I think the estimated total engineering fee and architecture fee was like 1.4 or 1.5 million would be the total cost. So this would just be a certain phase of it. So I just wanted to address that. As we have some deliberation, I just wanted to share some thoughts on getting to a point that, as a community, that we come together and look at this. I think for all of us to understand that a bridge is 90 years old, it has to be, it's on the downhill slope of its life expectancy. And, you know, a council probably in 25 years from now will be definitely addressing this issue on one way or another. So I think there should be some steps taken to think forward and go through the process. And I think there's, you know, I've lived here 14 years, and there's like a Capitola way, and sometimes people say that's a little bit slow. But what that is, is really engaging our community and making some of these decisions, and making sure we have information in front of us when we make these decisions. So some key things I would like to just have deliberation with the council would be, is first of all, I think to go through, and I think it started tonight, really trying to educate ourselves. I looked at the time spent on the last two city council meetings, were very quick, short questions, not two public comments, were only two that were made. And tonight, you know, the community's starting to be involved and starting to understand things. And I think we all leave these meetings being educated more by Jessica's detailed staff report. I'm quite sure if we need to have the engineers here to have more elaborate things, that's something that our city staff has always done. I think it's critical to really understand what we're talking about. We, you know, looking at, we do have money set aside. Should, I would feel really good about understanding what we really have as a bridge, as a condition. Because even though those comments that we heard tonight, if this bridge came back after looking at the inside and it was rated at a five or a 10, we'd all probably be having a lot of different conversations real quick. So I think that's really important, to make sure we look at that. The next thing that I think is important is going through a community buy-in period and getting the community involved in understanding what the potential, what the bridge would look like. So we all, I think, are very sensitive. I would think that Capitola Bridge is probably maybe one of the top five photo opportunity landmarks in the Monterey Bay, being very sensitive to that. But knowing in 25 years from now, if that bridge is not there, or what does that bridge look like? And going through some conceptual things to address some of the angst or anxiety that we have about change. One thing, I have been in construction for a very long time. I worked on many projects that, you know, sometimes you have a budget of doing a project that's a million dollars, and it's a historical project. That budget goes up because you invest in preserving the history of what something is. And so I would like to see a little bit more information on, maybe not just remediation, but if it was a new bridge, is there, maybe not just saving parts of the bridge, but is there, what else can be done? And educating our community, if the new bridge is 17 to 20 million dollars, everybody says, "Well, why don't we just save it"? You know, maybe the engineers come back and say, "Yeah, if you saved it, but if you built it, let's just be crazy, a new bridge around it is 30." That's just good to have basic understanding so that we know the reason why we had to make a financial decision, that the historical part of a bridge can't really be saved at that period of time because of what a cost impact. But at least we went through that step of looking at it. I still, I think some key things would be have community outreach designed, an opportunity to really understand what the condition of the bridge that we have in front of us. And also during this period of time, whatever this period of time is, I think we should make sure that we're setting some money aside for remediation work. Because as I read this report, as a city council member, which I'm quite sure my other city council member, it starts to create a lot of pressure and angst on us, like the next winter storm coming up, you know, is it going to flood? And then we haven't made a decision tonight to move forward and might flood, that we have allocated money for being prepared from, you know, a disaster preparedness standpoint of flooding. So those are some of my comments I hope that we can have some debate around and come to a point that we could do our jobs of looking forward on being proactive in the future what it looks like, but also addressing some key parts about what we have in front of us and what design things will look like and stuff like that. So thank you.
Here I go, reading my comments. So I want to first emphasize the fact that this is one of the oldest and most crucial critical pieces of infrastructure in this city. It's also one of the most hazardous flooding zones, which is why it was identified in the 2013 local hazard mitigation plan. It gets coastal flooding from the ocean, action waves, I mean wave action from the storm, from potential storms, and flooding, potential flooding from SoCal Creek. We also live in a seismically active part of the world, and this bridge is the only vehicular link between the eastern and western sides of the city, the only one. So if an earthquake hits and the bridge falls down, and there's an emergency over at the Venetian, our firefighters can't get across, our police officers can't get across. Even if we don't replace it in the next 10, 20 years, say the condition of the bridge gets to be so bad that fire trucks can't drive over, you know, big vehicles can't drive over. Big, what word am I looking for? Cargo vans for the businesses that need to deliver, make deliveries can't go over. That will interrupt the businesses as well. I think in true emergencies, every second counts. I find myself asking this question again and again as I sit on this dais. Do we want to take a proactive approach to governments or be reactive when things happen, when bad things happen? Do we want to be shortsighted and plant, or plan for the long haul? This is the question we should be asking ourselves with every decision we make, whether it be about adaptation of sea level rise, climate change, addressing, addressing our workforce housing needs, pursuing economic development opportunities, or investing in pedestrian safety and transportation infrastructure. Do we want to be proactive or reactive? The truth is, this will not be built in the next four years, maybe not even the next 10 years, not even when we're on council. Because the next four years' grant funding will be very questionable, given the current federal government. But we do have, but what we do have right now is funding for this next phase of planning so we can be prepared for when it needs to be replaced, either due to an emergency like flooding storms or earthquake, or because the bridge is at the end of its useful life. And like Jessica says, the typical useful life of an infrastructure like a bridge is about 100 years. And we know planning, this is long-term planning, planning takes a long time. So getting ahead of this process, just like we did for the Wharf, really helps to make sure that the projects move forward in a timely manner with the least impact on the village businesses. I just want to make sure that our city is prepared. And as leaders, we are responsible for planning for our future. And this includes risk mitigation and investing in our infrastructure needs. So I will be supporting the staff recommendation. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for the very insightful comments. I'm, I'm wondering if my fellow members would be interested in, I think, prioritizing, getting some visibility on the actual inside structure of the bridge. I think that would give, at least me, peace of mind for a little bit broader scale of a rating of where we actually lie for the bridge's integrity. I, I would really hate to miss out on funding that Senator Laird has worked really hard for us to achieve. You know, he's very fond of Capitola. He's stuck his neck out for us many times, and I think this is something that we should take advantage of. And, and if we do have a year span, maybe this is something that we can pull from as we do public outreach, pull from that 500,000 as we do some more public outreach, do some more x-raying or tunnel, tunnel digging underneath there. And I just, I want to make sure that we're setting other councils up for success, as it's been explained. You know, we probably will not see this project to its completion or even halfway through, but I want to make sure that people sitting in our seats 10, 15, 20 years from now are just left holding the bag in an emergency. So I'm hoping that we can maybe come to an agreement where we're taking steps in the right direction. Maybe we're not draining this whole 800,000 earmarked fund, but we are starting to utilize the 500,000 from Senator Laird in a way that we can all, as a community, become more educated in a way to effectively move forward and preserve the historical value that this city has overall. I don't think it's any of our intention to get rid of this bridge and totally change everything. I think the visual of the fact that we could sort of keep its, I'm trying to look for the picture, but keep a lot of the same look, maybe even repurpose some of the portion that is there. Those are the things that I'm really interested in doing. You know, we did, there was some flooding this year. You know, I'll talk to the people that own homes on Riverview. You know, they're redoing, spending a lot of money to redo a lot of their front yards and things like that. So there are, there are issues at hand, and I want to be able to address those, but also address things that were going to come up in the future. So I hope that we can kind of come to a common ground on how we want to proceed with our funds. Thanks.
Thanks. Yeah, I want to say that I appreciate everybody's comments and concerns that they've sent to us on email and showed up. It has been, there has been a lot of comments in opposition to beginning any plans of rebuilding or replacing Stockton Bridge. I think that there has been a significant lack of I think that there has been a significant lack of knowing the details surrounding this project and some false narratives regarding the bridges. The bridge replacements connection to the rail trail, which was really not a factor in the discussions at hand of potentially replacing the bridge. But in my mind, replacement, the replacement of Stockton Bridge has to do with that it's aging infrastructure. And we just are, we as a city council, but also as a community, are responsible for ensuring the long-term stability and safety of our public infrastructure. And, you know, like council member Morgan said, we don't want to leave another council or, you know, the future community of Capitola holding the bag because we failed to act. And then there's an emergency down the road, there's a natural disaster. I understand well the people's comments who say that that's unlikely, but still, you know, even if, even if it is unlikely, I think it's still our responsibility as a city to plan for any safety issues that may occur in the future. The bridge is nearing the end of its life. I will say, though, having said that, I do believe that this issue has become somewhat politicized in its relationship, well, perceived relationship to the rail trail and other sort of sense of divisiveness in our community that's happening right now. And because of that, I'm personally open to working more towards education and working with our community and removing the perception that we're moving things too fast, or that we're trying to force through this project to do with the rail trail or anything like that. My main concerns are safety, that we don't end up, you know, not being able to get an ambulance down, that the village floods, et cetera. And also that Senator Laird has worked hard to advocate for our small city, and I don't want to throw those efforts away. So if there's some way that we, as a council, can work together to utilize the half million dollars that were allocated to us and potentially do some further outreach, some further discussion, and try to find common ground, I would be open to that. Thank you.
Public safety, it's probably our number one job here on the council. Are we there yet for public safety? We have to replace the bridge? I'm not sure. Historic preservation is pretty high up there, too, on, on our job as a council. So what I'd like to see happen maybe is that we get inside our bridge, and we go on through the manholes, and we look at it, and we do more studying. I don't think we need to just make a decision, a quick decision on something that's so important. We've had a lot of people come and talk and say some great things and have a lot of knowledge. I think we'd just be better served if we would slow it down a little bit, ask staff to come back after some more inspections were done, and maybe we can make a better decision at that time. But I think historic preservation should be at the top of our list. I put that out there before we have anybody making a motion if we would like to direct staff on some further work on this.
Jessica, did you say that to put someone in the manhole to look at inside of the, to inspect the inside of the bridge would cost $30,000?
As of the end of the last year, yes.
Okay. And is that part of this plan, if we move forward with this, is that already part of the work that we're going to do?
It is within the scope of work that's being proposed this evening.
So if we move forward, that will happen? That's part of the money we're spending is doing that work? Going into the manhole, checking out the inside, investigating further? Correct? Thank you. So, 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 so what are we asking for? I'm just kind of confused. Are we asking for us to use a part of that money to do that first before moving forward with the rest of it? Because it looks like that's part of the scope that is, is what we're approving.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I think that it's an important part to know before we spend more of the money. If, if we could spend the 30,000 and gain more knowledge as far as how we should move forward, I think that's money well spent, and it will also create some more time for some more outreach and some more community involvement. And not, you know, not write off the entire amount of funding. I'm fine earmark, continuing to earmark the 350 with that if, if council wants to do that. But I think there's a couple steps that need to be taken before we should really rely just on this one contract.
So can we do that separately, Jessica? Can we just do that part first, come back with an information, and then approve the rest of it?
We can do a portion of the scope, depending on what council approves. We do need to do an amendment to the contract before we do any other work.
Yeah, so I think where I was kind of going from at the beginning, what I heard from the other council, is looking at a phased contract moving forward. I just had one question before I kind of go through some of those details. If the, if the motion was to automatically just knock over the bridge tonight and move forward to design, why was the inspector going to go through and spend $30,000 to inspect the bridge if it's going to be knocked down? I didn't understand that part, sorry.
It's required by Caltrans.
Before, oh, to be able to knock it over?
You are required to do a full inspection by Caltrans, as well as all of the environmental, all the other studies as part of that score of work before they will give you permission to take down a public bridge.
So great. So, yeah, so that's where I was trying to get to. I think in looking forward to, looking at the contract and breaking it, guess, down into maybe two different phases. One phase would be to do the part that we have to do the studies and stuff like that, go through the historical part of looking at it, look at what the, some conceptual design, what is the real rating? And at the same time, work with our community and outreach meetings and bring them along after through these steps. And then we might get to a point, let's say of this year for now, and look at that. I would also want to focus on looking at the money. If we use Senator Laird's money first, the other money is, the 350,000 is our, is really general fund money. So I would look at, will we focus on using that money first, or is that money all melted together? So, and so I'd be looking at, if we're going to go down a phased approach to it, I'd be looking at staff as your recommendations on how we'd go about doing that, and maybe you can bring that back to us as a plan, other than us trying to think that we understand what the plan would be. But I think the key parts would be historical nature, what it would look like, and an evaluation of really the condition of the bridge that we know today as we see it.
To give you a comprehensive answer on how we would phase it, we would have to go back to the contractor and discuss that. I will say a lot of that is the bulk of this work.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part.
A lot of what you have described of the conceptual design, going out to the community, doing the evaluation of the current condition is a big piece of this work. It is not all of this work, but it is a large part of this contract.
Thank you for that.
Would it cost more to break it apart and say, do these things first and then the other stuff later?
Likely not. I will say that based on your discussion, I would anticipate more public outreach than what is currently included in the scope of this project.
I also suspect that there could be some issues with fulfilling the grant obligations if we were to proceed with Phase 1. If we were to break it up into sort of like two really large chunks and ended up spending, say, $400,000, and then we decided not to proceed with Phase 2, would there be? So that would be something to think about. Conceivably, what I'm hearing the council suggest is doing this inspection, which frankly is part of the overall work, we could do that in the near term, doing some outreach. Maybe there's a newsletter, maybe we could take some of the information that we presented this evening and kind of consolidate it and put it into a newsletter, do some outreach, do the internal inspection, come back with the report, counsel, and see where we're at. Does that seem like a potential?
Yes. I think if we don't have to make an extension until, if we have basically an year before that, right, to use the 500?
Typically, you want to request an extension six months prior to the expiration of the contract.
Okay. Well, I, I, I would like to make a motion to use $30,000 of the $500,000 grant to take an internal inspection of the Stockton Bridge, followed by more public outreach in regards to maintaining the historical aspect. What else? I think that's it to start us off. Or if anybody wants to add anything to that?
Sure, I'll second.
May I ask a clarifying question, Mayor? So the $30,000 is for the inspection, additional public outreach would be an additional cost? Or forwarding the public outreach ahead of the rest of the contract would be what, probably more like a 45, $50,000 effort?
Okay.
Could we use Senator Laird's funds for that?
Yes.
So, okay, so it would be to spend whatever, 70, 80,000, right?
What other work makes sense, Jessica, to tag on with this? That's part of the scope? Like the environmental review? Like, I'm just curious.
You have to amend the first motion.
Isn't this the time for discussion?
No, we have a first and a second already.
We can have friendly amendments, though.
Yeah, you can make it correct.
So my friendly amendment is to add other scope of work that makes sense in conjunction with this, so we can do a little bit more work and get a little bit more information for our community.
I'd be careful, look, and Jessica, look, you doing that EIR would be, we don't understand what the scope of the project is going to be. So if we come back and the bridge on the inside doesn't have issues and we decide to get funded, I don't know if we really want to spend money on EIR and not know what the whole scope of the project is. So I think, don't you do the EIR when you completely understand the project and what the impacts are going to be?
Correct. I think if the question is what other parts of the scope could we do preliminarily before the rest of it, it really depends on what council is looking for. If they're really looking for just what the condition of the bridge is, that this is probably, the motion is probably sufficient. If you're looking at what the environmental impacts will be preliminary, or some of the cultural resources, or assessing some of the historical resources, if that is some information the council desires ahead of doing more design work, that may make sense if that is the direction.
I think the historical part would be important, and one thing I think would be great for our community to understand, if we can just get a quick snapshot on to keep the, to keep the bridge and why you can't, I know the report was pretty detailed on what you can't improve the bridge or rebuild the bridge, the way you talked about the hollow caverns inside and wooden stuff like that. But to maybe understand the, a little bit more detail when we look at a conceptual drawing, why that original bridge could not be repurposed. And so I think a little more detail in the outreach to the community, I think would be really important to make sure that they, we all, myself included, understand that.
So maybe as a suggestion, because I'm trying to figure out how to parse this, maybe what we could do is, there was a lot of good information presented this evening. I think there's new information for a lot of us that we saw. I think doing the inspection will also yield some more additional good information. I think that we could internally develop this presentation to do with some community groups, as well as with the BIA, maybe with all the town hall meeting here where people could just ask some questions about it, get the results from the internal study, and then come back to council. Because I think if we start to get like into sort of the SEQA analysis, that's the EIR, things like that, that really requires a design, it needs a project, and it becomes difficult to parse. So as a suggestion, that might be one path forward.
Yeah, I think keeping it as kind of simple in the beginning will-
And for clarity, yes.
Yeah, just like, let's get a better jumping off point. I feel like we're like throwing stuff at the wall and like nothing's sticking. So let's like, just really get to a more, a better starting point, I think. So if we are okay with spending the money for outreach and for the internal inspection, I think my motion would stand.
I'd hate to cap the dollar amount. You know, I mean, I think as staff, you guys, I think, hear what we're looking for. One thing you talk about outreach, I think it'd be great to get this agendized for if we're going to look at what our municipal code and some of those processes, get this in front of the planning commission, so as pan, EMF is just information, and make sure that they're aware that this issue's coming down the line. And, you know, they're a very talented group at themselves, and having some input from them on an early standpoint, advising us as council members, because I know we all really appreciate their hard work and their, the way they look at, and trying to provide us direction to as council members and to also to the community.
I think in addition to piggyback what council member Jensen said, we should also look in the commission on the environment to see what their comments would be and their opinion on this project.
So let's go back to the motion. We're motioning to spend money on the inspection of the inside of the bridge in the manholes, correct?
Yes.
Along with that was the historical aspect of Stockton Bridge, correct?
I think it was just outreach and manhole.
I can read what I have, if that helps.
Great.
So I have a motion from Councilmember Morgan to utilize $30,000 of grant funding to conduct an internal analysis of the Stockton Bridge, followed by additional public outreach and research into historic preservation, which was seconded by Councilmember Orbach. There was a friendly amendment proposed, but not yet accepted, to include additional tasks into the scope of work for the contract amendment by Councilmember Orbach.
Can I rescind that?
Sure.
I think we should remove the dollar valuation of trying to, you know, that would just be-
That's fine.
I agree with that.
That's fine. Just as long as it's done.
Exactly.
Okay.
So was that a motion amendment and accepted?
You had the motion, the second, and the friendly amendment, yes.
But the amendment to remove the dollar amount?
To remove the dollar amount, yes, I will accept.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have to second that?
It's already been seconded.
You seconded it just now.
Okay.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Orbach.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
And Mayor Clark.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, it is, can't even see the clock back there, but it's been a few hours. Let's take a, a quick minute break. Thank you, everybody.
We also have Frank Halex, who is a board member with Habitat. So with that, I'm going to jump into my slides. So tonight, we're going to be asking that you approve a contract with Habitat for Humanity for a rehab program, and it's a unique program that we've structured with Habitat for Humanity. And we're also going to ask you to approve a grant, or, sorry, an agreement for $22,500. So that will go to the next slide. So within our housing element, there's quite a number of programs that we're required to meet, and one of them was for housing rehabilitation, and that's really what this program is about. We were tasked with assisting 16 seniors, disabled and low-income households. And also other goals in our program are around protecting our housing stock. So this, this one that I listed is for rental housing, but there's also for ownership housing stock and just protect, protecting our, we don't have much deed restricted rental stock that the city manages or oversees. But the, we do have quite a bit of inclusionary houses that we do have programs for. So next slide, please. So tonight, we're looking at, we've, within our budget, we currently have $225,000 in the Housing Trust Fund. The Housing Trust Fund can be utilized towards housing in our community. It's the way that the Housing Trust Fund is funded is through our inclusionary in Luffy. So when someone builds a property, they get charged the $25 square foot, and through our housing impact fee, which is similar. Within our Housing Trust Fund, there's program outlines for that, and rehab, as well as down payment assistance are two programs that are authorized within that. Tonight, we're looking at rehab. Next slide, please. So within this program, it's been designed to provide grants up to $12,650. This, if they, if all the households maxed it out, we could assist- This, if they, if all the households maxed it out, we could assist 16 total households. If some households don't have as great of a need, we can actually assist more, it would be within the budget. So what we're, for qualifying households, we're suggesting that we utilize this program to preserve our housing stock, so the owner-occupied, deed-restricted, affordable units with resale price restrictions. So there are those units that through our inclusionary housing ordinance, and through, there's housing, through Habitat for Humanity on Bromer Street and 38th Avenue as well, these are, when these units go back up for sale, they're limited in price so that they can be sold to low-income households. So, great housing stock, I think we have 22 units citywide, and that's what we're suggesting we use this for. Next slide, please. So Habitat for Humanity, I think most people are familiar with the group, they're very reputable within the nation, and especially our local group in Monterey Bay. They've got 36 years of affordable experience locally with affordable housing. I think they've got 62, oh, 65 households locally that they've built. They work with volunteers, I've toured some, I've toured one of their properties, and it was absolutely beautiful out in Live Oak. And they, they follow the rules with labor and compliance, and they're committed to this agreement of just working exclusively with the owner-occupied, deed-restricted resale units. So, next slide, please. So I already mentioned the funding, 225,000, and then the 10% for Habitat. Next slide. So, how does the program work? I've got quick slides on this. First is that Habitat will notify qualified property owners of the program, so we'll work with them to develop a letter that will go out to all 22 properties in Capitola. The property owner then has to inform Habitat that they're interested and would like to participate. They'll then get an application, applicant will fill it out. They've got 30 days initially to fill out their application. It'll be ongoing, so if they don't want to fill it out within their 30 days, they'll have a chance to do it later. But Habitat will put interested property owners on a first-come, first-served waitlist. So if the application comes back between, in that first 30 days, they keep their place on the waitlist, and once they, priority will be given to those units that require emergency repairs, if they have disabilities, or seniors, so that's the priority list. And then, once the property owner submits a complete application, Habitat will go through, qualify the household, make sure that it's within our program, and that the work being done follows the program guidelines, and then they can proceed with the work. The last step in this is that a member of the city staff will go out and will go take a look at the inspection, and all the work that was committed to within the contract will make sure it was done. And just one thing I really want to stress here is because they're used volunteers, and because they have access to other programs, such as possibly getting like hot water heaters or other donations that they get, this, the dollars here, even though it says it's about $12,000, it really will go so much further. They're talking about doing full painting, exterior paint on some structures, because you've got volunteer labor, and they're really, they're buying the paint, right, and paying their construction lead. So, it's really exciting, I'm looking forward to reporting out on this when we complete it. We do have plenty of time to get this done during the eight-year cycle, so if it's not that popular in the beginning, there'll be opportunities for these households to come in over time. So with that, I would like to introduce you to Catherine, she's such an asset to our community, and if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself, and if you have any questions, we're both here to answer.
Thank you, Katie, and thank you so much, council members, and we've been so excited about partnering with, I think you are also excited as well, but the chance to support and serve locally, and to help folks, as you can see from the numbers there, about particularly people aging in place, people who are more vulnerable in our community, to help and support. And to your point, the added value we can bring to the people that you're trying to serve and who we're also trying to serve is, they're part of a, you know, a larger organization with Habitat for Humanity, where they're a local affiliate, and so we can and are able to do things in a particular way to support your community. We've been really trying to get a repair program in place, and so, starting with your city, we are so excited about doing that and seeing how it works in practice. So I'll just pause there, because you've seen the presentation. I've also got Frank here, and Frank's actually chair of our, is also a board member, but is also chair of our construction committee, and we also have a construction volunteer group who are wonderful, who will be helping support the work that we're hoping and excited to take part in with your city. Thank you, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much.
No problem, thank you.
It'd be a great project. Questions?
What's the opportunity in your outreach for the community about getting volunteers, like specifically in Capitola, so we can engage the community to come out and really just help their neighbor and be a part of that, and how does that outreach work?
So, what we have done in the past is, we, you know, we advertise our volunteering opportunities. The great thing about here is our construction lead actually lives very much and knows the community very, very well locally, and we are really excited about how we can go out and get more volunteers, because we're only as strong as our volunteer base. I know that Frank was, we do a partnership just now with the Long-Term Recovery Group in Santa Cruz, and we're up in Boulder Creek, helping rebuild homes that have been lost in the CZU fires, and Frank was just there today with some of our volunteers. So we can go out to the local community, we hope to advertise, we hope that by being present and people seeing our activity, they'll also want to get involved. But clearly, there are rules also around volunteering, as you know, we just can't have anyone rocking up into a, into a home, and so, we are very careful about, because of the sensitivities about that too, but we're really excited to find more volunteers and have more volunteer opportunities to get people out. This month is actually Women Build, so we've had people from Driscolls actually up in Boulder Creek, so there's lots of opportunities for others locally who would like to get involved, so.
And I think just make sure we really have that outreach out to the community about the volunteer bases, and thank you for what Habitat for Humanity does. I worked on a project, I was just reflecting back, I worked on a project back in Campbell, back in the mid-'90s, and building houses for, I think we built, we were involved building four houses, I think, and it was just an amazing process, and I still reflect back on it today, so thank you for what you guys do.
We actually have a group of the Berkeley students that have come for spring break, and I think there was maybe, I think there's 12 to 14 of them that were out actually in Live Oak today, working, doing landscaping, and so, they're a student affiliate, and so it was wonderful that they could spend their spring break, they actually, they actually had dinner tonight in Capitola, so we're helping the local economy as well, so it was great to see them.
Thank you.
I was curious about the, well, first of all, thank you, this is an awesome program, and I'm super happy that Capitola can support it, but my one question was regarding the priorities, is that from the city, or is that a Habitat for Humanity thing?
It's actually from our housing element.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was just wondering if there was any room to prioritize families with children?
I'm sure we could if the council, if that's-
I think that would be a worthwhile priority, as far as I'm concerned.
Or maybe we have such a low, limited number, amount of numbers, I think we should make everybody the priority.
You know, so if this is a very successful program, in the long run, I could come back to you with additional funding to continue for the rest of the homes, if that was something you wanted to see, but I think it's, we're at a good place to start, and see what the interest is with these households, but the PLHA funding we get could be applicable to rehab program, and so I think, I think we're at a good starting point, but if you'd like to, I'm not sure if it's, if it's legal.
Honestly, I'm not sure if we would be able to legally prioritize families with children in the housing context, I'd need to, we need to look into that, I'm just not familiar. So if that's the council's direction, that, that we look into it, then we can certainly do that, and if we can, we'll move forward with it, and if not, then we will come back and let you know.
I would say based on the project's success, or if we're running into, you know, where homes are not getting filled, or people are not getting homes that have children or that do have specific needs, maybe that's when we should revisit it and just kind of see how this first-step program goes, and then like get a report back. Sure, okay, if council's okay with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with it, let's just see how it goes, and we'll have time to look into whether we can legally prioritize families. I think this, I can envision this program continuing for a long time, this partnership. I mean, this is a great, great program, and it'll preserve our current affordable housing stock, so I'm excited about that.
Great. So you know more council questions, we'll open up to public comment. Okay, we'll bring it back to council deliberation and motion.
Is there, I move the recommended action.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And there was a request for a photo, if possible.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Catherine, if you'd like to come stand with the council. And Frank, you're welcome too, as well.
Well, do it right in front of them, or do it come back here? What's, what's better? Yeah, I think the front's better. So, that'll bring us back to item C. Housing Element Annual Progress Report 2024.
Okay, tonight, I'm excited to report out on our annual progress report for our housing element. As you know, the past three to four years, we adopted a new housing element, we've been, in the past year, implementing the housing element, and this is a required process. On April 1st, every year, we're required to provide the annual progress report to the HCD. Next slide. So, in the, this slide includes the entitled projects for the last year, as well as building permits and completed projects, so next slide. Under entitled projects, we've had 70, these will count towards our RENA once a building permit is pulled. Next slide. Our building permits is what counts towards the current RENA, so when you see the RENA breakdown, you'll see 48. Looking forward, it really is about 118, if we're looking at all the projects that have been entitled, and you'll see for the five-plus units here, there's the 52-unit entitled project at 1098 38th Avenue, and then the 36 units on Capitola Road. These larger projects make a huge impact at us getting closer to our goals for RENA, and I would, for 52, for the 52 units at 1098 38th Avenue, they were not funded this last year, they got the news this January, so they're once again going to be putting a request in for funding. So at this time, that project is on hold, and we're continuing to support them and try to find other avenues in, in any shape we can, so I met with them last week. Next slide, please. So here's our RENA breakdown based on income levels for the very low, low and moderate. I'm not going to go into too many details, I know you've already read the report and seen the attachments, so, next slide, please. Housing Element accomplishments, we have given 1.25 million to affordable housing, and that went to the 1098 38th Avenue, and then a lot of different like informational sources out there, meetings with interested developers, nonprofits, that's how that, this whole partnership with Habitat started, was through conversations of them working together, what can we do together, putting together guidance documents, our mobile home park assistance, so the list goes on. In terms of rehab, we are working with the Dakota Apartments on Claire Street in order to put together a home application, that's been slow on their part of documenting existing conditions, but I'm continuing to work with them and hoping that goes forward. Next slide. So for zoning code updates this year, we've done a lot, you've seen these at other presentations when they were, well, most of you have seen them last year when they were adopted, but here's a list of the big impacts that have happened over the last year within our zoning code. That was, I want to say, eight meetings in front of Planning Commission, and then several meetings in front of the city council, so a lot of work went into that over, during 2024, and that was adopted by the end of 2024 to keep us current within our progress report. Next slide. And then, if you don't mind, I'm going to just tell you what we're up to this year. So for 2025, so that was 2024, that's what we're submitting to the state. For 2025, we're currently working on multifamily housing development, so revising the zoning standards, and also looking at the densities that were allotted there. We've been, we started this process in 2024, we sent out notices to a lot of different households, and we didn't have great standards in place of what qualifies and doesn't qualify for actually getting more density, like is there actually room on the lot for more density? Was it built more recently, or is it older housing stock? So we, we slowed that process down, we now have seven criteria that we're looking at within the housing, the multifamily, and you'll be seeing that, we're going to be working with Planning Commission, and that will come to you ultimately in the end, but we're really trying to build objective criteria in which could actually end up with a real housing stock improvements and increasing density where projects could really happen. So, there's a lot of condos out there that would be hard to get extra density at because of HOAs, and you'll be seeing that. The next one is for commercial redevelopment, this is all about the mall, so this is a commitment in 2025. We actually came to city council last year and Planning Commission with commitments in our housing element to increase the height to 75 feet, and the floor area to remove the garages from the FAR calculations, the floor area, and to adopt objective development standards. So we're starting that process with our consultant now, and I was hoping to check the box for multifamily and then move forward with mall development. We're really, Jamie and I are trying to engage the mall in, in terms of working with us on this, so that's an effort that we've started, and we're going to continue to chip away at, and hopefully they jump into these conversations with us. So, next slide, please. This one is housing on public in quasi-publicly owned land. The first item is about the school districts and nonprofit developers, I think that's hopeful, and I could see some progress being made there. The second is about us reaching out to the state parks and the Department of Motor Vehicles, we had those as sites on our inventory, and it was rejected by the state, and we are going to be reaching out to them and seeing if they have any interest. I did that last year, there was no interest, but we're going to keep pursuing that, because they're really large sites, and to create some like workforce housing out of New Brighton would be amazing for those, you know, to house people out there and for their workforce, and then also, Department of Motor Vehicles, there's a project, a DMV, at one end of Golden Gate Bridge, that I know is currently, they're redoing a project there with like three stories of housing above it, so that's maybe a possibility, and I think it would be great if we could, if they would work with us. So, next. Housing Trust Fund, so this is what we just discussed, and this is our partnership with Habitat for Humanity. Next slide. And then Housing for Persons with Disabilities. So, within our zoning code, we'll be building in, I'm not sure if it'll be just the zoning code or like our fee structure, but to provide regulatory incentives such as expedited permitting processes and fee waivers and deferrals for projects targeted at people with disabilities, so. And with that, we're recommending that you direct us tonight to submit the annual report to HCD by April 1st. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you for the presentation, and we'll go to questions from the council.
Can you, two questions, one thing, thank you for the report. One thing, it's a random question, what about, we never directly ever refer to and-
kind of economic development site we sort of have in the city, and so we, we've tried to hold on to it, but.
I was just wondering, you know, I mean, it's been the, you know, card storage, it's been the Caltrans storage, it's that mobile home park sales office, and it's just, it's such a vital part of, you know, we look at 41st, which I totally agree with, and that's the next quarter that, you know, comes in off of Highway 1. I was just wondering what those ongoing conversations are, or how often they have.
I'll check back in with them, it's been a while.
Right, thank you so much, appreciate it. Thank you for the report.
My question is, I know there's been some recent zoning code amendments with the RM zoning, and there were some drastic changes, going from, I think, 38 areas to seven areas or parcels, some of which would be upzoning changes that would have brought the current parcels into compliance with what actually exists. Can you talk a little bit about what happened and why you went back?
Sure. So I'll first talk about the, just, we're looking at new criteria. The first time we went forward with the zoning code changes, we were trying to bring any, there's a lot of parcels in Capitola that were built more dense than the current zoning allows. So there's a lot of examples when we went through this exercise. So our first pass-through, we said, well, let's bring those all into compliance and put them into the right low, medium, or high zones. And the other part of this was, the criteria we had set up really looked at like environmentally sensitive habitat areas. But we didn't have that much other criteria that we were looking at in terms of identifying sites. So after we went to the Planning Commission last year, and we had a lot of public input, we decided to tackle it a little bit differently. We said, well, what did we do in our housing element to identify our sites? And when we identified our sites in our housing element, I'm going to, I should say, there's only two sites in our housing element that are multifamily, so we're not dependent on multifamily to meet our RENA. So now we're looking at financial feasibility. So if it's, if someone just bought the parcel and has a really, you know, the loaned value is, is not good, or the physical suitability of the site, is there area to build more housing on the site, is it totally maxed out? Neighborhood compatibility, in terms of what are the surrounding uses around the parcel? Is it close to transit is a factor now, as well as natural resources and hazards, which was the first criteria that we used. And then in terms of those units that are existing and already exceed the density, we think it's better to build in just kind of a, an exception for those structures, to just make it clear in our zoning code that there are a number of units with, or a number of developments in Capitola that exceed their density and they're legal non-conforming units. So there's no, there was issue, there was concern that they wouldn't be able to get loans, and so we're working through ways in which we can just put it out there and make them legal non-conforming. So that's where we're at with that, instead of, you know, increasing the density. There was a lot of public perception that we were, the city was going to come in and redevelop these sites, and, you know, so we've been doing a lot of public outreach too, at the same time, and having community meetings, and trying to get a better understanding out there. But really trying to make it more realistic of where development could occur. And when we talk about ownership pattern, that's another criteria. A lot of condos were included in the multifamily, and there's almost no, like, is like zero likelihood that a condo is going to redevelop. And there's great ADU incentives right now for condos, that they could decide within their green space to possibly like build some ADUs, but we're seeing that more with full apartments, not condominiums, because you, you need a HOA vote in favor. So that's the answer to that.
So it sounds like there's more ongoing conversation with the Planning Commission in refining some of these kind of criteria, as well as maybe upzoning some, upzoning some of them and not others. This is still ongoing, correct?
Yeah, and we're thinking about creating a whole new zone that has a higher density for these properties that meet the criteria and could actually accommodate additional housing. So going to a new level beyond the 20 dwelling units per acre.
I just don't want to put all our eggs in one basket and expect the mall to happen in the next eight, seven years, right, before we are, you know, by 2031? Because it sounds like the mall isn't moving on at all.
Yeah, so it's really important when thinking about the housing element, is that we're planning, and we're making opportunities for developers to redevelop their sites and to produce housing. But we, as the city, do not have the funding to redevelop sites. I don't have a million dollars right now that I could put, and you know how many millions it takes to build a. So we're, we're, we've been doing all these amendments to our zoning code and, and policies in order to create those opportunities, but when, in Capitola, where we are a built-out city, it's a challenge, and especially in today's environment with construction costs and the economy. It's a really hard challenge right now for getting commitment on redevelopment.
Totally get it. In reading the 2011 41st Avenue plan, I think the statistic was, how many, 89 acres, 60% of that area is parking. 60% of that area is parking. So I see a lot of potential in using those spaces, and I know even in that plan in 2011, the identification of a parking district, or more centralized parking, to make that space more walkable, instead of these long streets. And, I mean, it's just, I'd like to see more of that happen, and have more opportunity for homes to be developed for our workforce.
Okay, that'll bring us to public comment.
I just watched an educational program on fire safety, and it was complete on the LA Fire. And what they said about that was, the houses that did not burn down, and you can see it, it's in the documentary, were clay roofs, they were also vented on the sides for, what do you call that, Jerry, your builder? The attic. Yeah, yeah. Anyway, they were fire-vented, so fire could not get in, and they had at least five to eight feet all the way around them. So with our new state requirements, I'm wondering if we can push back on the state a little bit about initiating those fire issues with new safety standards. The man that developed that, they'd been working on it down in LA for over 12 years, and had approached the people to see if they would do that with their homes. And if we're going to be a forward-moving community that is going to provide housing, one of the worst things that happened with that fire wasn't a wildfire. A wildfire is grass, it shoots through. The reason why the fire burned so badly was because the places were so close together that it was wood clumps with huge winds. And I realize we don't have those San Ana winds, but we do have, we had a hurricane in Scott Valley, what can I say? So there are some issues that are coming up with safety with building, and I would like us to be forward-thinking about pushing back, about putting those elements in, instead of having tinderboxes like we have on Capitola Road. So can you initiate some of those? And can you push back a little bit on that to see if we can make it a safety factor for the future? And there were clay roofs with the venting, and with the surrounding area having more space. Thank you.
Thank you. Bring it back to council deliberation, deliberation.
Katie, can you answer that question? There are objective standards to setbacks, correct, for buildings?
Correct.
Okay, so the five, seven feet is a, our requirement is probably more than that?
I guess, I guess it depends on, like, in the commercial areas, it will, like, it'll be, there's a certain setback from the property line, but as buildings, definitely from the property lines, I'm, I definitely can have another conversation on this to see exactly if it's from landscaping, or trees, or, but from property lines, yes.
Really not connected, but next time, Katie, you come back with a report. I think we all, you know, read the news and see different things. Can we get a snapshot, or could you work with your, with the, you know, planning department over at Santa Cruz, and get an understanding, like, how many units they have built out, and then what is their vacancy rate, or how they're selling, and like average price and stuff like, just for some information. You know, we read the paper, but it depends what article you read and who writes the article, but just whenever, next time, if that's just be some information you bring back, I think, looking at one of our neighboring communities on how they're doing and what their success rates, just as information, I think it'd be valuable for myself, maybe for the rest of the council.
I think Matt Huffaker, is that his last name?
Yeah.
Anne Bonn, anyway, they both recently wrote a piece on The Lookout, exactly outlining what you're asking for, Jerry. It's a really informative piece, talks about, you know, all the units they've built out, all the affordable units are close to 100% filled, except for, I think, just a few that are pending application. So that, I think that information is there.
I could attach that to the Friday update tomorrow.
Okay, I didn't read the article, I was, I was looking for, like, the next time you come, so like, the progression of, like, just when we get these updates from you, just as sharing the information.
I do want to make a comment that compared to the other cities in the county, we have built the lease number in 2024.
With that, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to submit annual report to California Department of Housing and Community Development by April 1st.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. With that, and just to adjournment, thank you, everybody. Be safe, take care of each other.